Well, good afternoon, everybody. It is one o'clock. Today is June 2nd. It's a regular commission meeting. In June 2nd, 2020. So I want to go ahead and I'm going to read this information. Again, we are doing this by Zoom today. We will keep you posted about what's up to come with a future commission meetings. So if you would like to join our commission meeting today, you need to click on the link below to join a webinar. Or you can also, you can also call in. There's also a way to call in. If you have any questions, you can also email Celin Hurtado at the city. Once you have joined the meeting, so we're going to be using the free digital conference and service June Zoom. So you can join from your PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Or you can also join by phone. The public can watch the meeting live on Facebook Live at Garden City, at City of Garden City KS, or YouTube at City of Garden City, Kansas. So we'd like you to do that. If you have any questions, please email them to Celin Hurtado. We're getting, we'll get ready here in just a moment to call the meeting to order. I do want to make note that if something happens where we lose internet, or we can no longer, I know we had some issues with some connectivity yesterday. If we do that, then we would need to go ahead and reschedule the meeting at a time when we could actually provide proper notification. So I just want to make sure you know that we would not probably continue the meeting and we would rely on those of you whoever is still connected to let everyone know that we would need to reconnect or reschedule. So I want to make sure and tell you that just in case something happens with our internet connectivity. You never realize how important internet and Wi-Fi were until you don't have it. So with that, I want to call the regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum present?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I do want to let you know that Commissioner Ortiz will not be here. But it looks like all the other commissioners there. And today, the pledge of allegiance to the flag and the invocation is Commissioner Euler's. You'll put the flag up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, through scripture you tell us that you are the light of the world. You bring us hope and clarity to situations that leave us anxious and confused. Let the peace of Christ rule in our hearts. Grant us clarity and wisdom on all our decisions today. Be with our first responders to keep our community safe. Father, as always, we are thankful for all you give to us, and for that, we give you praise. In your name, amen.
Amen. Mr. Euler, thank you so much. That was very appropriate prayer. I appreciate that. So we're moving on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, and which if there are no corrections, they'll stand as approved. Now, remember, we had a regular commission meeting on the May 19th, and we had a special meeting on May 22nd. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Okay, if not, well, they'll go ahead and stand, and they will approve, they'll stand as approved. With that, we're going to go ahead and open it up to a public comment. Now again, we are going to allow 30 minutes in our schedule. Please, let me hear your comments to five minutes per spokesperson. And if you send something in earlier, we'll have our, we'll have Celin read that, our clerk. And if not, again, you can go ahead and raise your hand if you have something, if you're on the webinar or on the Zoom call, raise your hand and you can speak. Celin, anything for a public comment?
I have not received anything and no hand raised.
All right, great. We'll move on and to consideration of petition, memorials, and remonstrances.
Here in Commissioners, the first item is the governing bodies is being asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim June 2nd, 2020 as Sam Curran Day in the City of Garden City, Kansas. And this morning, we had a great opportunity to convene with current and past employees, some stakeholders around the community that have worked with the City of Garden City and with Sam in particular in his role as Public Works Director. And we're really, and we are also joined by some of Sam's family as well. We're really happy for Sam and Leila and his plans for retirement and their plans for retirement, but certainly sad to see him go and a big loss to our organization, but he's left us in a good situation in a lot of different ways. He's been impactful in setting up some systems over the last decade that help, help the staff and help the commission make decisions with respect to capital improvement planning, equipment replacement, and those types of things. And so really appreciate his, his innovation, his willingness to work on some of those projects. And then just also his leadership with the construction and maintenance of several different infrastructure projects over his career, which dates back to 1992. So I know Sam's, Sam's available for, to say a few words too. But Mayor, maybe before we do that, if we want to take up the proclamation, we presented it this morning at the reception. So this is at the will of the commission, but it's going to be extremely awkward if it doesn't pass.
So with that, I would like to call for a motion.
Commissioner Sessna, I make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Ken and Dick, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Dick. So again, I'm going to go ahead and go through the roll call, make this simple. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna? And Mayor Unruh, aye. So I, Sam, it passes unanimously. So you, we proclaim June 2nd, 2020 as Sam Curran Day. I did get a chance to read that there, and I just want to say a few, just a few, before I give Sam a chance to say something. I know Commissioner Dick was there also. I'll tell you, Sam, we cannot thank you enough as a community. There's lots of behind the scene things. One thing I learned today that I didn't realize was how many of the advisory committees that you put into place and how much community engagement and community involvement that you have personally been responsible for. Not only with the CIP project, but with all of the advisory committees. And the advisory committees have provided us as commissioners with wisdom and input like never before. So I, we want to thank you. We know Kentucky is, is a lot different than Kansas, but I do want to let you, everyone who couldn't attend, he received a very neat Kansas sunset or sunrise. Sometimes they look the same. But I'll tell you, we just want you to remember us as we're going to finally remember you. And with that, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we took a vote. Sorry. With that, Sam, we want to turn it over to you.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. It has been an honor and privilege to serve this community and be part of this great organization for 28 years. I also want to thank the Commissioners. It's been a pleasure working with you and even the previous commission. It's been just a great ride with the Commissioners. And Matt, I want to thank you for your leadership and Garden City is in good hands with you. Also to the senior staff, I just thank them for working with me on projects and finding solutions to, to projects that arise during design and, and construction. And I also want to put out a special thanks to all the hardworking, dedicated Public Works employees for their service to this community and making my career special. And then I'll finally say that I want to thank, a big thanks to my wife Leila and the kids for their support. I couldn't have done it without them. I'm looking forward to another 35 years with my wife on our next current chapter. And, and finally, Garden City will always be our home, and we wish only the best for this community. It has been a blessed career, and thank you so much, Garden City.
Thank you, Sam. So Sam still has a few, yeah, applause for Sam. Sam has a few, a few days left. So if you would like to see him in purpose, in person, I'm sure we can arrange that. And again, I see some of the wonderful ways in which they honored him. Commissioners, you want to, if anyone wants to say anything, I don't want to move quickly over this. I mean, his career has been long and dedicated and illustrious with us as Garden City. Is there any, any Commissioner would like to say anything? I want to make sure we, we take some time just for a few moments here.
Well, like you said, Mayor, it's impressive to see the dedication that Sam had to the city and to the community. When we're talking about community engagement, Sam is really one of those people that's led our community in that direction. And really, we have so much to be thankful for on his efforts in that direction. And I mean, the amazing work he's done with Public Works, we have amazing streets, we have no roundabouts, we have all the I mean, but really, all the things that we could, that, that, that people think are, that make a good city. All those things that the Public Works things that, I mean, it's not businesses, but it's what makes up that, the, the city that holds it all together. That's really been what Sam's legacy has, has been and will be for our community. So he's been a great leader with him with CIP, where the community can come in and, and actually get their opinion about where our city goes forward and how seriously Sam took that and that transition as we go forward. He's been a great leader and he had a very well-deserved retirement. So thank you very much, Sam.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to say something too. And Sam, again, I also appreciate the fact that with through the CIP process, you made it really easy for somebody like me who came in really not knowing a whole lot, but learning. And you never hesitated to answer a question. It wasn't always the answer we wanted to hear, but that I think is probably has been the most that I value and cherish is the fact that, you know, you, you have, you have great vision and you have done wonderful things. And I will never be able to look at a roundabout without thinking of you. So thank you, Sam, for everything that you've done.
Just call me when the first one gets filled.
We're going to put a statue in the middle.
It's going to be the memorial of the Sam Curran Memorial. We'll call you down.
Yep.
Commissioner Sessna here. I just want to thank Sam for his leadership over the last 28 years in the community. Really projecting servant leadership in our community through all that he's done for all, not only the departments, but the city overall. You definitely left your mark here in the community, and thank you for all that you've done. And we wish, or I wish you well at your next and journey in life.
I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure working with the school district, especially on the snowstorm. So I do appreciate working with the school district, so.
Well, Sam, yeah, when we do, when, now, and when we get that roundabout, not yet, when we get that roundabout built, Samuel, we'll let you come put your handprints and your footprints in that. And then, yes, well, there will be only one name for that. So we'll make sure and allow you for that. I do, I just want to say, I, I, we really appreciate all the work you've done. I tell you, this short time in a commission meeting isn't enough to say thank you, but hopefully we can get by. And again, just thank you again and safe travels to you and your family.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next item, Mayor Commissioners, the next item is another proclamation. The governing bodies asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim June 5th, 2020 as Sharice Teaven Day in Garden City, Kansas. And I'll just preview this item a little bit. Hang on, I need to share the screen here. Make sure I'm sharing the correct one. Sit on the packet. Okay, I think we're good. Anyway, the Sharice Teaven is the city manager of the City of Dodge City, Kansas, and she'll retire on June 5th, 2020 this week. And she's been an important leader for her community for sure. Has actually, actually began working for the City of Dodge City as a teenager and has worked her entire career, including extensive human resources as an assistant city manager as well. And just a fantastic person and, and professional. And the, the the other thing that I think is maybe lost a little bit because of the whole Dodge City, Garden City thing is the two city governments actually work quite a bit together. You know, for all the Friday night rivalry that there is between the two communities, there's a lot that the two communities have done in partnership to help advance, advance the infrastructure and economy and, and, and social causes in, in Southwest Kansas. And so we consider Dodge City to be a big partner in everything that we do in city government. And in Sharice, during her time as city manager, has played a huge role in that. And so Mayor, there's a proclamation here that if you don't mind reading, would again be presented later in the week to Sharice at her retirement party in Dodge City.
So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the proclamation for Sharice Teaven Day as June 5th, 2020. Do we have a second?
Commissioner, second, I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. We'll go through the roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna?
Aye.
And Mayor Unruh, aye. You know, Matt, this, this would be, this would be an honor for me to read, but I, I know that you and Sharice have a a long history and a relationship that spans lots of different things. And so I would be honored if you would read that this for Sharice, because I, I know this is going to be recorded. I do want to say Sharice, it's been wonderful getting to know you. You have an incredible staff. We love Dodge City because Dodge City is part of who we are out in Southwest Kansas, and we're excited about your retirement. But Matt, I would ask if you don't mind, would you mind reading this? And that way we'll have that for Sharice.
Be glad to. Whereas city manager Teaven is retiring after 31 years of service with the City of Dodge City. And whereas Sharice Teaven was promoted to assistant city manager on October 22nd, 2007, and promoted to city manager on January 6th, 2014. And whereas Sharice Teaven provided leadership that extended beyond the corporate boundaries of Dodge City and made a positive impact on regional, statewide, and national levels. And whereas examples of the leadership are improving the access for rural cities to federal housing programs, the Southwest Chief Rural Rail Partnership, regional commercial air service, state highway plans that include expansion projects in Southwest Kansas, and strategies for regional higher education. And whereas Sharice Teaven welcomed partnerships and collaborations with City of Garden City staff and encouraged elected and appointed officials in her own organization to do the same. And whereas Sharice Teaven will be remembered by the people of Garden City as a Southwest Kansas leader who selflessly offered her sharp mind, strong voice, and warm heart to public service. And whereas the staff and elected officials of Garden City and the rest of our community wish Sharice and her family joy and prosperity in retirement, that now therefore be it resolved that I, Troy Arunruh, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 5th, 2020 as Sharice Teaven Day in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to celebrate 31 years of service to the Western Kansas area. Signed and sealed this second day of June, 2020, Troy Arunruh, Mayor. So thank you, Mayor. We'll send that, we'll send that off to to Dodge City staff. We've also prepared a video for her as well.
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, it's, she's done an awesome job, and I, I know that's, they've hired someone already, but I know it's, I know this is hopefully an opportunity for us in Garden City. Thank you so much.
And did we get a vote on that, I guess?
Yep, five, four to the eight.
All right.
I know it's, it's a little bit different because we do the roll call. And so I'm, yeah, I'm, I had the first one. I forgot also, so.
Very good. I think we're ready then for report of the city manager. Item A, we provided this letter, we received this letter two weeks ago, Tuesday, a letter from Dr. Burns for the governing bodies review regarding COVID-19. We mentioned that we put it in this packet so that it's part of the public record. Usually it would be, if we're handbound in person, it would be part of the bench items, and, and there's a way we preserve those for part of the public record. But really, item A is just a filing for the record, the letter that was distributed to you digitally last Tuesday. So, you know, obviously, in the whole COVID-19 thing, two weeks is two decades. So I'm not sure what else, what else is different from what, what's in that letter, but you were provided it when it was, when it was current. 7B through 7D are staff reports from various city departments. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to, try to answer those for you.
I only want to make one comment. I was able to attend the sales tax oversight committee meeting yesterday, and we got a tour. We are, they are so close out at Lee Richardson Zoo and phenomenal. I mean, it is, it's very exciting. You kind of get a little bit lost because a lot of things don't look the same. And so, so some of our, our familiar anchor points are not there, but what we have, what will, what we have now, what we're going to have is going to be just tremendous. And we're looking, we're excited. Hopefully, as that gets done and to open back up the zoo, that people are going to be excited about the lemurs and the new animal hospital. I don't know how many people will see that, but if you would like a tour, Kristy said, please contact her. And I'm going to tell you, it's especially easier now before they get animals in. But it's going to be exciting. And the flamingo is, it's beautiful. Everything is well done.
Thank you, Mayor. I call your attention to meetings of note, which there isn't a lot, a lot of meetings there, just the Economic Development Corporation Board meeting, the details of that. Might note too, that we continue to update what we're doing with respect to city facilities and how they're open. And I would just let everyone know that we had designed kind of this, what we thought would be an evergreen document through the rest of the COVID-19 response that would address, you know, what happens at phase two, what happens at phase three, what happens at phase out or phase four. And so that, last Friday morning, kind of got, or last week, between the governor's decision and the, and the Fannie County decision, made that not work as well. And so we have to retool that document. Won't be a big deviation to it, but it'll give it a little bit more definition, I think. We've, we've been discussing that internally since that announcement by Fannie County Friday morning. And so had a little bit of a time as a senior management team yesterday afternoon to talk through and get on the same page for what we thought the best protocols would be and the best timing would be. You know, we are, as far as being open for business, I would say we are virtually open for business across the entire organization and have been throughout the response with maybe the, a lone exception would be patrons being able to take in Lee Richardson Zoo. But keep in mind, the zoo also provides services in, in other ways, educational services in other ways. And the care of the animals doesn't take a day off. It doesn't take a weekend off, doesn't take a holiday off, doesn't take, and so all of that, that work is still being done. Access to inside some of our city facilities and city buildings has been limited or, or eliminated during the COVID response, but all those services are still available in other, in other methods. So really, our strategy since very early March has been, how do we staff ourselves and how do we limit exposure to others and others to us in a way that allows us to avoid a situation where we could have a an entire function of what city government provides, go on pause for two weeks while everybody's, you know, quarantined or in some form of isolation. So our, our strategy has been really a continuity of service plan. And in order to accomplish that, we've had limited access to our buildings. It's anticipated that we'll stay in that mode for a little longer. And so we still think we'll be able to provide all the services, but it might not be in the be in the fashion that it was up until, up until mid-March. Now, that being said, I do anticipate that this is the last time we'll have to do a city commission meeting via Zoom. So the, even with limited access to the building, we had anticipated that there would be a phase in there where we could host public meetings, which would include the city commission, like Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, those types of things, where you're really the only, the only times of public access for two of those buildings. We do the spacing, we utilize the large meeting room as a holding room. We have two other meeting rooms where, that if we had some issue that brought out 50 to 100 people, that we would have a strategy for, for keeping those people out of the main chambers until their issue was presented, then they could come present on that issue and still be able to follow the meeting on a simulcast in those other larger rooms. So really, that's the plan more than likely for the July 16th meeting. The, all the other details for all the other facilities, but that's the one that most directly impacts the commission in our public meetings. And so I kind of wanted to preview a little bit our intentions moving forward.
Hey, Matt, this is Commissioner. I know during the county commission meeting, I'm talking about reopening, they did mention the zoo a couple of times about they had comments from the public about the zoo opening. Do we know when we could expect the zoo to open?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, Matt, I appreciate you and the senior staff and also really the whole staff really thinking through what it looks like to reopen. And so, and I know that we as a commission have really, we're, we understand that we're willing to really do what needs to be done. And so I'm looking, I mean, I'm looking forward to sitting, how that looks, how we sit together on our next meeting. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone in person, but knowing that this has been something that's necessary. I know we've gotten a little bit better at it. But hopefully, like I said, as, as we reopen, I know we want to do it safely for everyone. So thank you for taking time to do that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I think with that, we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriations ordinance number 2508-2028.
Mayor, I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2508-2028.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Sessna, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. We'll go through the roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna?
Aye.
And Mayor Unruh, aye. So And Mayor Unru, aye, so it's aye, five to zero. So the appropriation ordinance passes. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, the next item is ten A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve making improvements to the city's sewer and drainage system eligible for financing. If approved, this would be ordinance number twenty eight sixty five dash twenty twenty. And I'll invite Finance Director Melinda Hitz to speak to this matter. Melinda? Not here, Melinda, so uh. I'll go, go ahead and go through this uh, in. So the voters had approved a countywide retail. Sales tax in November two thousand seventeen to provide funding. For some identified projects and one of those projects, as you know, is the Jenny Barker Road project. So the east side retention pond is the outfall for most of the Jenny Barker Road storm drainage system. Um, and is critical to the construction of this project. Um, the project of, of course, also really takes care of the uh, the, the east side, the, the. Inside city limits drainage needs of that region that is east of the bypass that's inside the city limits, so. The, the project has a really big footprint for uh, the impacted and improved area. Uh, but uh, it, it made sense to do the Jenny Barker Road. And the east side drainage project simultaneously, and you'll see actually that later in some bits that are shown to you. Nonetheless, uh, the, the uh. The, the approval of the ordinance before you. Uh, makes, it, it does not obligate the city to do the project or to it issue financing, but it does make. It does make it eligible uh. For financing and so really our plan moving forward is that uh. That there would be some. Uh, some long-term financing for this drainage system project. Uh, and that uh, and that we use a temporary note strategy on the, on the Jenny Barker Road project that would. Align it for when the sales tax money comes in uh, to pay that off. So I don't know if Melinda's jumped back on and wants to add anything to that.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, well, Matt, you did a great job, so.
So, thanks. Uh, I think your options are to approve the ordinance to and authorize the project to be eligible for general obligation bonds. Uh, to not approve the ordinance and to defer the action to a later date and we request that the ordinance be approved.
So before we do this, I just want to um, take a moment to add, if there's any questions of matter, Melinda, and then also I, I do, I, I really appreciate Matt talking about. The need for that, that really that area of town is really the lowest point, or he calls it the bowl of Garden City. And so without this project or without this project moving forward, we're going to continue to have a lot of issues and especially as that develops over there, so. Matt, would you just like talking a little bit about that? And I mean.
Yeah, that, the, the geography of that area is. Well, let's face, we live in Southwest Kansas, stormwater issues are the least appealing issues to talk about until we get one of our three. Three inch rains when it all comes in like thirty minutes and then. Then we notice it and throughout Garden City, you notice it storing in the uh, in the road. Uh, which really calls attention to an urban road, serves as sort of your first layer of stormwater management. So reason why you see roads designed to kind of go up and that, those are, those are funneling water. Uh, to specific inlets that then take it into a subterranean or a ditch based uh, stormwater system to get it out, get it removed and, and take it somewhere else. The geography east of the bypass that includes city limits area and also some county limits area. Really has higher elevation all the way around it and so it, it create, it really is, it creates this bowl in that area in there. Uh, if, if you go over there after a storm. You know, as bad as we know, the, the water will sit at, uh, you know, along Fulton or along like Manning, Kansas or Manning Fleming for what seems like a couple hours. Um, it'll sit over in that area for a long time and in some, in some instances, it doesn't drain away, it just waits until it evaporates or, or. Or soaks through, soaks through the ground, so uh. That uh, that area has historically always sort of had this bowl effect. Um, and then that's of course, as development occurs, gets exacerbated and we've tried some, uh, you know, we've built. Quite a bit of stormwater infrastructure. If you think of all the stormwater detention or retention ponds you see around town, the first several that come to mind are probably over in that area. There is a pit that allowed a solution um. And it's out Sherman Road, uh, probably a mile or so, but it. It allowed the opportunity to take a, 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 a sort of a regional storm drainage. Micro system and turn it into more of a, a macro system, subterranean, taking large quantities of water to a large regional detention pond. And uh. That's, that's what this project's after and it's uh, uh, it's an expensive project, it's a big project and it, and it has to occur. Really simultaneously with Jenny Barker Road. Or we run the risk of building Jenny Barker Road with sales tax and then turning around and ripping out a portion of it. To throw this infrastructure in and, and so not only did they need to happen concurrently, we believe and are working with the county. Uh, that there was an opportunity to do a couple of things, one. Have that design all work together, uh, design that project and bid it as one to create some efficiencies. The second thing is, don't just design that as a city project, design it as a regional project and the county's partnered with us. Uh, since the very, very early planning stages to build a, a system that they could tap into and size it to where they could tap into. And uh, begin to start addressing some serious stormwater issues that they have. Um, heading out a little further east than where our city limits in.
No, I, I, I appreciate the background. I think it's, I mean, I know that we've been involved with it for a long time, but I really, I, I think, I appreciate for other people who, especially in the community. And who are watching and who will watch later on to really understand what this project's about. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call for a motion.
This is Shannon Dick. I move that we approve ordinance twenty eight sixty five dash twenty. Nor disauthorizes the city to make improvements to the city sewer and drainage system, authorizing the city to issue geo, general obligation bonds and pay the cost of such improvements.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Sessna, I'll second.
Commissioner Cessna seconds, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unru, aye, so that ordinance passes five or four to zero, sorry. Use the Commissioner T's.
Thank you. Item ten B, uh, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty eight forty eight and would abate. A nuisance violation at thirteen oh three Hattie Street. Carol? I don't hear Carol at the moment, so I will uh, do this one as well. The governing body, uh, the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for a person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property. And that case exists at thirteen oh three Hattie Street, uh, we notified the uh. We notified. First of all, visited the property on mi- in many occasions, um, without the ability to reach the residents and our owners. Uh, and so then we were notified with a, with a door hanger on March tenth, two letters sent on March seventeenth and April sixteenth. According to section thirty eight dash one thirty seven of the environmental code. And uh, they've never uh, abated the nuisance as requested. And so I've got some pictures on here. I might also call your attention that the next item uh, addresses a vehicle. At the same location, but it uses a different um, a different portion of our code to abate, abate that, but uh, both of these. Both of these resolutions have to deal with thirteen oh three Hattie. And do you have any questions about the, the violation or the process used to notify the owners?
No, I appreciate that. We really, I, I, I think the city staff goes above and beyond trying to contact and making sure, so Commissioners, any questions with this? If not, I would go ahead and call for a motion.
Commissioner Sessna, I make the motion to approve resolution twenty eight forty eight dash twenty twenty.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Christian Euler, I'll second.
So Commissioner Euler seconds, again, let's do the roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
And Mayor Unru, aye, that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Item ten C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. Um, and if adopted, this would be twenty eight forty nine dash twenty twenty and would remove the motor vehicle nuisance at thirteen oh three Hattie.
So Commissioners, I know that you saw the pictures. Is there, if there's no further questions, I would like to call for a motion on this.
Commissioner Euler, I move to approve resolution number twenty eight forty nine dash twenty twenty.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Sessna, I'll second on that motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. Again, roll call. Commissioner Euler? Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unru, aye, that passes five to zero. Thank you so much.
Item ten D, resolution twenty eight fifty dash twenty twenty. Um, the governing body is asked to consider and approve this motor vehicle resolution. Uh, and it abates a uh, motor vehicle violation at twenty one twelve North Main Street. There's a little bit different information. You can see that the letter, the door hangers were left on the thirteenth, two letters sent March seventeenth, April twentieth. As well.
This is Commissioner Sessna. I make the motion to approve resolution twenty eight fifty dash twenty twenty.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Euler, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded, so let's go ahead and call for a roll. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unru, aye, that ordinance passes also, that resolution also passes five to zero. Thank you, Matt.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, this is Carol Davidson. Sorry, I had some technical difficulties. If you have any other questions, you certainly can.
We understand, believe me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I can handle the, the nuisance notices, Carol, anything harder than that. Stay close. All right, the uh. We're, there's no old business on the agenda, so we're ready for item twelve A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a name and corresponding theme for the new aquatics facility. And I'll invite Assistant City Manager Jennifer Cunningham to present this item.
All right, good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this has been um, ongoing behind the scenes as part of the new aquatics facility project. Um, while we've been working on some of the other things and so um. I'm not going to spend a lot of time um, talking to you about this because Terry from the Confluence Design Team is actually here. And this is one aspect so far that I have not been in charge of. I haven't. Uh, done the, the management or facilitation of it. Um, I left this to the Confluence Design Team. I did participate. Um, and we had a lot of wonderful participation from um, throughout the community. Um, that it ranged in age groups and um, also in background and specialties. So that we really could incorporate a lot of different ideas um, into this naming and theming process. And so at this point in time. Um, I'm going to, uh, well, I do want to mention one other thing. So the way that we uh, got to this point was we started out with a survey. Um, asking people a few questions that we hoped would um. Allow the Confluence Design Team to come up with more than just five or six names. So that the naming and theming committee that worked through this would have a lot of choices. We then used the naming and theming committee to narrow those choices and then we took the narrowed choices, the four uh, ones that were chosen by them and we sent those out to the community. And those are the results that are attached to this survey and the four names that came out of that were the Garden Rapids, the Garden Oasis, Thunder Rapids and World of Water. Um, those are the ones that you saw at, at the uh, meeting on May second and um. Or on May second and the ones that uh, they had to put a color theme to, if you remember. Um, each one had a different uh, color scheme and then had some different ideas about how we might incorporate that into the project. Um, this is a really important item, not, not necessarily just the name, but the theming piece of it because we are working to quickly move. To a contract for a guaranteed maximum price with our contractor. So that we can begin work on the facility and in order to do that, um, the theme is really important because they're going to start selecting. Colors of slides and chairs and all of the things that are going to go into the facility and getting those nailed down so that we can get good pricing on them. Is going to be really important and so that's why this is before you so early. I know people might be wondering, well, why do we need to do this now? Um, but that is why um, the conversation is so important that we do it early. And that we, we, we nail down some of these ideas, so. Um, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Terry and at the end of this, I'll, I'm available, I'll answer any questions you have about the committee, about um, the discussions we had. Um, or anything else that you might want to know or understand as part of this process.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, Terry, thank you.
All right, great. Um, I will, I guess, does somebody want to pull up the presentation or get to the slides? It's not allowing me to share my screen.
Am I sharing? Terry, this is Matt Allen. Am I going to share what's in the packet or do I need to let go of my share and let you take?
Why don't you go down to the next? I think what's in the packet will be fine.
Okay.
I mean, you're good at, you're good at doing um, motor vehicle nuisance. Do you want to hang, hang around and do this?
I think, I think I'm, I think I'm tapped out of my talent.
All right, uh, well, um, this is Terry Burke Bigler with Confluence, uh, Mayor, Commission Members. Good to be back with you again. Uh, and I agree with the mayor. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone in person uh, sometime soon. Uh, and we'll say this is the first time we have gone this long into a project. Or far into a project design phase without having some face-to-face meetings, so uh, but our team's been working. Uh, diligently to move things forward and we're excited to uh, find out what do you all think makes sense from a theming standpoint. To follow up on what Jennifer was saying, uh, it's, it's important for us to have an idea, you know, ASAP like today or very soon. Of where you think the theming and naming goes because it does influence color choices, it influences some of the uh. Signage, environmental graphics, things like that. But once we have this input from you, then there will be a process by which, you know, we'll be bringing back more detailed design. Uh, of some of those parts and pieces to you, so um, there will still be opportunities and that's. That's something we also hope to be able to engage the community and um, the design process on if some of those uh, you know, some of those more aesthetic. Uh, related options as well. So um, picking up where Jennifer left off, the four names that I shared with you, your four name options I shared with you. Uh, the last time we met, um. Those were put out to a public uh, survey for about a week um, earlier in May. Um, and was promoted out through social media, different outlets like that. Uh, we asked folks to rank them or, or um, really give each one a, an indication of your preference or like. On a sliding scale from one to ten, ten being the best. Of that, we had a hundred and eighty-three total respondents. Um, of those, uh, there was also a fifth question, which we gave the people the option to say, I didn't like any of these at all. Uh, only thirty-one people chose that option. Um, so vast majority of the people liked at least one of the names to some extent. So that's the good news. Uh, Matt, you can go ahead and scroll down. Um, so just to kind of recap, the Thunder Basin, the Garden Rapids, the Garden Oasis, the World of Water. Those were the four uh, options that folks were able to consider. Uh, and each of these four kind of collections of images and text and color schemes were presented with each option. To give them an indication of how some of those theming elements could be worked into play features uh, and so forth and how we can begin to develop mascots or. Or characters that represent some of these names. Go ahead, Matt. So while the good news was that we had a lot of responses. The maybe not so good news for you all is they didn't make your decision real easy. See the mayor shaking his head.
Terry, you shouldn't be laughing like that, so.
Well, I was laughing because I'm not the one that has to make the final decision. I'm hopeful, however, that this doesn't wind up in it being kicked back to us. So I should probably not laugh, because that's probably what's going to jinx me. You know, basically, the way we tallied this up is. You know, 183 respondents, each one could have ranked anywhere from one up to 10. In terms of their amount of like, or amount that they liked each one of these options, so we totaled the scores up for each one. And you can see the results there, Garden Rapids is the leader by a small margin. Garden Oasis, Thunder Basin essentially had a tie there. The only one that, you know, that fell short was World of Water. You know, I'm not sure that I can give you much more to help you make that decision, honestly, other than. I would say that the committee that put these four forward for ranking by the community. One of the questions we did ask, and we went around the virtual room, I guess. And asked, were you comfortable with any one of these four being the final choice? Because that's really what we needed to make sure of, is if you're putting something out for the community's input. We need to be comfortable with them, you know, with one of those options. Any one of those options being selected. Ultimately, as has been told to you, it rests on, you know, on your shoulders to make that final decision. So I suppose you could change if you chose to. We hope that the committee's input and the community's input is helpful. And at least giving you something to respond to. And I would say that from a committee standpoint, and from our standpoint as a design team. Any one of these four options could be a good option. And we can do a lot of fun stuff from a design standpoint with any one of these four options. With that, I would be happy to answer questions or sit back and watch the discussion. And we do hope that you're able to come to a decision today, but if that's not possible, completely understand. You know, we just need some direction as soon as we can.
Terry, thank you so much, this is Mayor Andrew. I want to say I had the opportunity to serve Jennifer and some very, some really great community members, like she said, from all ages, we had a lot of fun. And I tell you, there was a lot of thought about this whole issue, and so. As you said, moving these forwards. So I do have some thoughts on some things, but I do want to hold back. So since I had a chance to kind of go through this first, if other Commissioners have some thoughts or some things that they want to say. I want to make sure and include those, and then we'll each get a chance, and then we'll come back. And then Jennifer, is there anything that you wanted to say about the group or the?
I just want to say, I never realized how hard this was until I participated in this group. And listening to someone who was very young, all the way up to someone who had been in our community and really understands the history. And the things that are good and bad about names and themes and all those sorts of things. And then seeing how they come together here on paper, and then kind of trying to visualize what that will look like down at Fennett Park. Extremely difficult, even to get to these four, I felt like was a really strenuous process. But I, at the end of the day, I think good work has been done behind it, and I would be really supportive of whatever the Commission decided to do.
Great, thank you, so. They said if you can make it through the decorating part of building something, that we can do anything together, so. They say this is where Commissions are made or unmade, so I'm just kidding. So anybody who would like to go first, or some thoughts, and again, I'd like to gather thoughts, and then we can kind of all get a chance to, and then.
Mayor, this is City Manager Allen, I would just remind you, and I can read it, or you can read it. Commissioner Ortiz did provide for this issue some thoughts, just to, he wanted to make sure he could contribute to your discussion, even though he couldn't be here. And so when you believe the time's appropriate, Mayor, to share those, I'd be glad to read them, or you can too, if you have.
Yeah, if you have them handy, I'd appreciate that, so let's hear from the Commissioners on Zoom, and then we'll kind of finish up with, from all of us, and then we'll finish up with Commissioner Ortiz's, and then we'll kind of see where we land with that.
That sounds good.
Anyone want to go first, or?
I guess I can go first, and I think I feel. Like Jennifer said, and Mayor said, that, I mean, I can see where any of these would be appropriate names for the big pool. And that I really thank you for looking at theming. The redesign that we had a couple of years ago with bringing more of the zoo into the motif of the big pool. I thought was a positive. Way to look at tying those two together, I mean, as family activity, the big pool and the zoo is. You probably can't beat it in southwest Kansas for the price, for the value that you get. So I think that any way that we can continue to tie those two projects together. Will be better, so that being said, I tend to like those ones that have a little bit more focus on animals. Maybe a little bit of focus on the natural world that we have. So I like that, the colors that are on Thunder Basin or Garden Rapids, I think those would make good colors that wouldn't be too bright to look at for so long. I'm kind of. I don't know if yellow, a lot of yellow would be, would be a good solution, so. Those are maybe my first thoughts on that, I don't know if you want me to talk more about it, Mayor, or if that's good to kick it off.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you, let's kick it off, and we can go around, and that way we have, I mean, we're learning how to discuss on Zoom, so there are no right or wrong on Zoom discussions, so we're all learning, so.
This is Commissioner Euler, and. I feel like I'm on a game show, you know, where you got to make a decision, and I really want to own like several friends. But I have had an opportunity over the weekend to talk to quite a few people and run the names by them. And again, it was a lot of what Commissioner Dick said, which is, you know, somehow figuring out how to incorporate. What is Garden City, what is Finy County? And so Garden Rapids was one that kind of always floated to the top for me. Because I like the Otter, and they're always fun to go see at the zoo anyway. And it has garden in it, and so, and I think that's important too, is that there'd be some sort of a local moniker or something that that sort of ties it all together. Honestly, though, I mean, there aren't any bad names, I think that, I mean, Thunder Basin, although. Thunder Rapids would be pretty cool too, but I think for me, Garden Rapids was one. And that was also one that just seemed to resonate well with a lot of the people that I visited with.
Thank you. Commissioner Sessna, do you have?
Yeah, Commissioner Sessna, thanks for all the hard work that the committee's put together. You know, this is something that's another tough decision for this Commission. But I really liked all of them, talking to people and looking at it over the weekend. The people that I discussed and talked to liked the Thunder Basin, they liked having the Buffalo. You know, Garden City High School, that's the mascot for Garden City. We do have the Sand Sage Buffalo Range Wildlife Preserve next to the community. We do have Buffalo in our zoo, so people kind of tied all of that together for our community, and that kind of ties our community together. But then they also like the Garden Rapids, because we are Garden City. It's garden is in our name, but they like that. But a lot of people tended to, that I spoke with, they liked the Thunder Basin because of the Buffalo and having Buffalo in the theme. And that's kind of who we are here in Garden City.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessna, so, and then, so I want to make a comment, and we'll go around if we need to. So I, one thing, if you wouldn't have put the chameleon, got a lot of attention because they said they're so darn cute. So if you could have made that one a little bit uglier, that would have been much easier to fight against. Yeah, I really like the energy around Garden Rapids and Thunder Basin, I think their, I think our new water. Our new water park, whatever you want to call it, is really going to be very, a lot of energy, a lot of fun, and that's something I want to do. But I do really like the, from talking with people, they really like that, and I love the Otters too. And I think that the Garden Rapids does tie that to Garden City. I know that the opportunity to do a lot of fun stuff with the zoo, and I'm in agreement with that, I think really the zoo and all of those things together. You know, I do think that adds a lot of value there, but I do like the energy between the words thunder and rapids, I think there is a lot of that. As far as, like I said, I'm a big fan of the Otter, so. So let's go ahead, and if we'll go back one more time around, and then we can kind of come to consensus, and then we will go ahead and call for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we have either you or City Manager Allen read what Commissioner Ortiz?
Oh, thank you, yes, thank you so much, I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, I'll do that, I need to figure out how I. And then I need to share a different screen. Sorry for the delay there, I'm going to increase the size of this. Whoa, that's a little big. All right, so, yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Ortiz's interest in putting this together, and told him we'd present it. So I'll read it as he's written it, "My comments on the naming of the pool. Sorry, I will not be attending today's meeting, but I thought I should write to you about my thoughts on the name for the pool. I appreciate all the work that went into the process for the naming ideas. And trying to get people involved to come up with a name they thought for a selection. There were many ideas and names that went into the pot, and then breaking it down to having four to choose from would have been my top four also, give or take. But I did like the name Thunder Basin originally. But as I searched what would pop up in a search engine online, I came up with lots of other things like high school mascots and the Oklahoma City Thunder. I did the same with the other names and came up with a few hits in other cities that were common with some of the names that were selected as well. Even to be similar with other water parks, but in other states. I do believe that the name we select should be a unique one, and one that fits well with Garden City. I don't want to delay the process, but I do feel that the naming of the pool has not received the attention it deserves. I would like to see, if possible, as Commissioners, put a bit more feelers out and ask our own followers what they think is the best name out of the four mentioned. Or give a suggestion if they have one. The online survey gave too many restrictions of being able to give a suggestion. And I understand the intent behind it, but I think we need to be more open to the community. I did come up with one other name, and you can take it or leave it for what it's worth, you won't hurt my feelings, lol. Garden City Heroes Water Garden, this could be a way to implement some Garden City Heroes in places for fire hoses and water cannons. The design would reflect all police, fire, ambulance, doctors, etc. Or this could be a fun and unique way to commemorate the Navy, Marine, Army, National Guard, Air Force, and many others with some papers to be set in place. Around the lazy river, or just the kiddos area. Anyway, thank you for listening, and whatever you decide, I will support, sincerely, Manny Ortiz."
Thank you, Matt, for reading that, okay, so do we have any other discussion, or any other comments?
I will, I see what Manny is saying with having uniquely untied naming convention. So one of the thoughts that I've been having with this is, is whatever the name it goes with is having that tagline at the big pool. And I'm sure Terry knows a lot more about if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but that's a way, because I have a feeling, at least even. I can foresee, no matter what the name is, next year when it opens up, when I ask my kids if they want to go somewhere, it's not going to be to Garden Rapids or Thunder Basin, it's going to be, do you want to go to the big pool? So I think that is probably a way that we can still put a nod to that, and still acknowledge that this aquatics facility. For Garden City is the big pool, and it's not necessarily what's physically there, but that idea of that large water facility is the big pool for Garden City. So that might be one way where we can address that sort of thing. I don't, I think that the theming, like you said before, I see, well, first, I want to say that Manny thought that there wasn't a lot of community involvement in. And I do think that we did have ample opportunity with the, I mean, from the naming, where, I mean, there's completely open-ended. Tell us what you would name it, you get multiple choices, that you can just, whatever name, tell us why, so you can even have some history to it. I mean, there was, and I mean, if we saw this process before, there was pages of names that came in through it. So I think that, and then the process of, okay, well, we narrowed, the committee narrowed it down to four possible names, the community then has the ability to. Say all of them are good, or none of them are good, and since we saw that, the majority, four out of five people said that at least one of these names is good, and then we even see that. Three out of four of the names, people overall think it's good, I think that the process did do its job. And, I mean, it's up to us now, we have, I think, three very livable names that the community overall has. Has said is okay, so. I think I want to address that, I would, if I was going to have to, I feel like World of Water really isn't a contender in this, in this conversation, because of the community reaction, stuff like that. And I'm going to say one thing that Commissioner Euler said too, that Otter is, I mean, that was a hit with every kid that I talked to, and we showed them this. That's the number one thing that they saw, which again, how much of that, then gets tied to Garden Rapids. Again, I mean, you could put a bison with Garden Rapids, you could put an otter with Thunder Basin, and I don't think they tie one way or the other. So I think that's the summary of the rest of my thoughts on what we, what we need to do here, so I'll pass to somebody else.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Euler, I really do like tagging it at the big pool, or having the big pool in there somewhere, because you're exactly right. I oftentimes forget what the water park in a community is called, and so I usually just say. Water Park at whatever community, and so I think you're right, I think people are just going to call it the big pool. Or the new big pool, but I love the idea of either Thunder Basin or Garden Rapids at the big pool. And you're right, I mean, one of the nice things about this is the fact that regardless of what name is chosen, you can still sort of plan the theme around, you know, different ways to incorporate Garden City into it. And so. I mean, I'm not any closer to making a decision, but I do, I mean, either one. I mean. I know which two I won't pick, and that it would be Garden Oasis and World of Water, but between Thunder Basin and Garden Rapids, I mean, those. I mean, obviously, would be two that I would consider, and so I'd like to phone a friend.
Yeah, this is Mayor Andrew, and I'll let Commissioner Sessna talk. I, one thing I did notice is that people said that, you know, they would, well, they were surprised we weren't calling it the big pool, whatever, something. And I said, well, I mean, we're trying to create some energy and new, you know, a new history. But I did think that honoring by saying, you know, at the big pool, and honoring history, because when you search for Garden City and you see the big pool, you'll see what we had. For a hundred years, and you'll see now what we have, and so this idea of the evolution, it's like the big pool we imagined, and so I do like that a lot. Again, I think the Garden Rapids, the colors, and then the Otter really appealed to me, I love the energy at the Thunder Basin. So I mean, like I said, either one of those two, I'm in agreement, that's, we might have to just come down on those two. Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, I agree with the other Commissioners, you know, the big pool is an icon, not only in our community, but it's one of the wonders in the state of Kansas. It probably should, and it'll be referred to, you know, you change buildings, or you change things in, you know, communities. And they still call it the same thing that it's been called for a hundred years, like the big pool has been called the big pool for almost a hundred years. The big pool has been called the big pool for almost a hundred years, so. Whatever we name it today, they'll still, like everybody's mentioned, we'll still call it the big pool, or, you know, the. You know, the new big pool is open or whatever, so um, yeah, if we can make it a tagline. Um. At the big pool is great with me. I will throw a motion out there, just to kind of get it rolling, and we can see how everybody votes. Um, I'll make the motion that we approve uh, the new aquatic facility being named uh, Thunder Basin at the big pool.
Do, before we get to the secondary thing, do we need to, do we, because we're talking about the theming, the naming, and the colors. Are we talking separate motions for all that, or are we just saying if we choose Thunder Basin, we're just taking that whole milieu with it?
I would say. I can com- I can comment on that if you'd like. Uh, this is Terry Burke Bigler again. Um. Primarily right now, it's the name and kind of the general theming that would go with that. Colors, these are some sort of, I would call it a sample color palette. I wouldn't get hung up on the exact color. But it was more intended to show you, you know, an example of how color can support a theme. Um, ultimately though, there would be more, those decisions coming back to you, sort of like a materials board, if you will. Um, of color palettes, um, characters, things like that. So, you know, I see our team. Diving into other ways to connect to the zoo with other animals, and regardless of which name you go with, there's a lot of interchangeability there. The, the only thing I would say is the. Thunder Basin colors, you know, you think about those being somewhat tied to that. Um, you know, the, the range of colors, I should say, is going to probably fall more in line with what you see on these sheets, not the exact colors.
Thank you for the clarification. Do we have a second to that? So seeing no seconds, so that motion um, died for, with no second, with no second, do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the naming of the new aquatic facility Grand Rapids. At the big pool. Or Garden Rapids, I mean, not Grand Rapids, Garden Rapids, sorry. I amended to say Garden Rapids at the big pool. Yeah.
Do we have a second on that one?
Oh, Shannon Dick, I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Terry, I'm gonna ta- we're gonna get you for this. I'm just gonna tell you. Any further discussion before we go ahead and go, go down the uh, the roll call? Okay, so Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unruh, aye. So passes five to zero. There you go, Terry.
All right, I appreciate it. Um, we will get to work on this part of the project now. Uh, and my final comment is just, I have always appreciated how you all talk through things and make decisions. So I appreciate that, even the hard decisions, so um, you know, you realize your role in keeping this project moving forward, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, and before Terry, uh, before you jump off, I want to, I want to check with Jennifer on something. Um. Commissioners, there's an item under the consent agenda that we're gonna pull off of the consent agenda and discuss in some detail, and I didn't know if that was a. Um, of value, uh, or maybe of, of necessity to have. Uh, Terry involved in that. It's the McGowan Gordon contract. Uh, and. I know that's not your firm, you guys are the design team, but I didn't know if that was something that it would be worthwhile to have you. Uh, present for that discussion.
Matt, this is Jennifer. Um, Terry is more than welcome to um, stay on if he thinks that he can provide any value or have any discussion to that, but. Um, Todd will actually um, be participating in the call on behalf of McGowan Gordon to discuss any questions or uh. From there, so I, from, from my perspective, Terry is not necessary in that, but I'll leave that up to him.
Okay, and so my, uh, my question to you, Jennifer, is that, uh, does it make sense to discuss that now, since we're sort of in the, in pool mode?
Um, maybe. I li- I told Todd that I would let him know as we were getting close, because he had some other things. Um, so let me just see if. Um, he's ready to jump on, and if he is, we can dump to that.
Uh, okay, we'll, uh, we'll take up, we'll take up an issue, and you can, you can just let me know if uh, if, if and when we're ready.
I will just go ahead and kind of listen in. Um, the value of these virtual meetings is I can do something else. Um, and still participate, so if you need me, you say my name and I'll, I'll be available.
Thanks, Terry. Thanks for your work.
So, so Matt, I'm looking at the um, at the new business agenda. Could we possibly do item um. E and F, and then that way, um, we would have Rochelle do the, the A, the B, C, and D. Does that make sense to you, or?
Um, yeah, it does. Uh. It does. I think we can, we can probably get through B, C, and D. Uh, it. E and F, E and F is, is fine either way. I think uh, E and F will probably take the same amount of time as B, C, and D.
Your choice, whatever works, that's.
What do we do, what do we do B, because I imagine Rochelle's probably closer to being spooled up and ready to go. Uh. Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the application for federal assistance. For the Garden City Regional Airport Cares Act Grant, and the uh. The, the amount of this Cares Act grant is seventeen million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred nineteen. Dollars, and uh, before, I'm gonna turn it over to Airport Director Rochelle Powell, but. I'd just like to let the commission know and uh, and some community members. Uh, the announcement of this amount to Garden City Regional Airport came out. Uh, a few weeks ago, um, and so that was sort of out in, you know, the public arena. Uh, we were reluctant to talk early about it because we didn't fully understand it. Uh. And um, there was some attention being drawn, uh, not just to that program in general, but to the amount that some airports received. Uh, in relationship to other airports, and so um, Rochelle's worked really hard to uh. Uh, and we've worked really hard with our congressional delegation as well, uh, to understand this, uh, to um, identify. Uh, identify an appropriate use. We had a desired appropriate use, uh, and, you know, we really. Uh, uh, we're, we're energized to work to that end, and uh, I think uh, I think you'll be pleased to. To hear what Rochelle's come up with, so I'll turn it over to Airport Director Rochelle Powell to walk you through this issue.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I apologize for the background noise. If it's too loud, please let me know. We have some aircraft outside my office window, which is creating some. Lot of noise for me, so hopefully it doesn't carry over on this meeting.
It sounds great, Rochelle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the coronavirus aid and relief and economic securities act, which is Cares Act. Um, provides funding for airports that are affected by the prevention of prepared, preparation for and response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, the Cares Act provided basically two different funding sources for airports and economic relief to them. The first one is um, they increased the twenty-twenty AIP share for federal projects um, from. Our percentage right now is ninety-five, five split with five si- five percent being paid for the city. However, the Cares Act provides a hundred percent federal funding. So that is a benefit to us, and here in a couple um, agenda items, we'll be discussing H, AIP forty-three, which is affected by that. And will be a hundred percent funded through the Cares Act. The second portion of that provides funds for economic relief for the airport. Um, utilizing a formula derived from the FAA using um, primary. Commercial employment numbers, as well as um, looking at the twenty-eighteen. Financial report that we submit, um, and factoring in uh, the debt that the airport has, which the Garden City Regional Airport had zero debt. And then we also had a healthy cash reserve, which um, went into the formula and. Spit out the uh, funding for the seventeen point nine million dollars that we were awarded. Um, the FAA currently um, is wanting to get this money out on the streets and eligible for um, at this time, it's for operation. And maintenance of the airport expenses for reimbursement. At a later time, there will be the opportunity to. Admend the grants agreement to include development costs to be utilized for the terminal projects that we are pursuing. So at this time, we can only use the funds for operation and maintenance costs, but in a couple months, um, we're looking at. Admending this grant with the consideration of the governing body approving that to go into the development side of it for the project. Uh, the terminal project. So at this point, your alternatives are to approve the federal app, assistance application for the amount of seventeen million. Nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. Do not approve it. Um, staff's recommendation is to approve the. Application for federal assistance. Just a financial note, um, the terminal project is estimated at twenty-six point eight million dollars. Um, there are a couple other funding sources that are in smaller amounts that we're gonna look into to be able to use for this. Project as well, but there will probably be a decision by the governing body to um, do additional city financing and that amount less than ten thou-. Ten million dollars to help offset the additional costs, and all that information will be provided to the governing body at a later date. On, as we proceed through this application process and amend the grants um, for development as well. With that, I'll ask if there's any questions that I can answer.
Any questions for Rochelle? I, I, I just want to say, Rochelle, I, I've learned so much about the airport and um. I know I've learned a lot from Commissioner Sessna, so I want to say thank you also, because he's a big airport fan, and. You know, the way that you run the airport and um, that we are eligible for this, uh, that really speaks to um. Just how regional we are and also um, the great job you and your staff are doing. The city overall, but I, we just, I just want to say thank you. This is um, when you see the figure, you have to step back and say, make sure you have your commas in the right place. Because this is um, this is pretty impressive and pretty amazing, and I appreciate that you had everything ready to make this happen. Any questions or comments for Rochelle?
This is Commissioner, I make a motion, we approve the application for federal assistance for the Garden City Regional Airport Cares Act Grant in the amount of. Seventeen million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
This is Shannon Dick, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. We'll go ahead and go through the roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ses- Sessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unruh, aye, so that passes uh, five to zero. Thank you so much. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is twelve C, and the governing body is asked to consider and approve. The low bid from Highlight Airfield Services for the airfield remarking project. At Garden City Regional Airport, and this is AIP forty-three. Rochelle?
Um, yes, uh, so we just kind of mentioned about the AIP forty-three. This is also part of the Cares Act that is a hundred percent federally funded. So the city will have no portion of this project. Um, this project is remarking the main runway and associated taxiways. And also relocating two signs. The bids were publicly advertised, and we were able to acquire three bids on it. Um, as Matt indicated earlier, Highlight Airfield Services uh, was the low bid in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars to do this project. Uh, the injer- engineer's estimate was way over that, so um, we're good on that factor. So going through this on um. Accepting this, there's additional information provided by our airport consultant, H and T V, that has. Some of the federal requirements that we are supposed to do for AIP, um, including the war for contract bid tabulation and contract award documentation. Um, that includes Davis Bacon Axe, DBEs, everything like that. Um, the approval of accepting this low bid recommend. Um, allows the uh, city clerk and uh, mayor to execute the contract documents with Highlight Airfield Services if approved. Uh, the alternatives are approve the low bid from Highlight Airfield Services, do not approve the low bid. Or governing body guidance to staff, staff recommends approving the low bid from Highlight Airfield Services for. The remarking of the AIP forty-three project. Um, just to do a fiscal note, right, real fast, the total project, including. Construction services, engineering services, um, is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars, and again, that's a hundred percent. Federally funded um, through the AIP and Cares Acts.
Any questions for Rochelle? If not, we'll call for a motion.
So uh, you, could you talk just a second, Rochelle, about what made such a difference between the low bid? The other two bids, and then the engineer's estimate on, I mean, because that's, I mean, we're a factor of two to three on that. It's not, it's not just a slight difference there.
Yeah, so if you go through the bid tab, um, on this, a lot of the, the individual information was very comparable. Um, surprising enough, uh, some of the location costs coming into um. Mobilization, I'm sorry, that's the word I was looking for, um, was higher, uh, for some of the other contractors, and it was lower for Highlight. Airfield Services. Um, I am more familiar with Silson and Sons, just because they're based out of Wichita, and they've worked on our airfield. Um, previously, but Highlight Airfield Services does projects all across the country, and our engineer um, did. Request uh, references from them, and a lot of folks had wonderful things to say about them, and said they are very fast and efficient. And so I think some of that efficiency cut down on their cost, and so they're not gonna be here as long as. Possibly some of the other contractors would, which helped reduce their costs. Um, as far as the engineer's estimate, I only can say it was very conservative. Um, just comparing the unit prices, uh, you know, their mobilization was way over um. Pretty much all their costs were, so uh, that's conversations that we've had with them, and those numbers were based off. Previous projects that we had done on marking, but they were in smaller amounts, so when you, when they did the calculations. Um, the total unit price really came up and versus a small uh, amount of painting. Um, so that's kind of the difference on that end as well.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Sessna. I'll make the motion, we approve the low bid from Highlight Airfield Services for the airfield remarking project at Garden City Regional Airport. Improvement AIP three dash twenty dash zero zero dash twenty-four dash forty-three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Euler, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. We'll go through the roll. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unruh, aye. Okay, that passes five to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Then item twelve D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the application for federal assistance for the airfield remarking project. Garden City Regional Airport, AIP forty-three. Rochelle?
So since you just recently approved accepting the bid, this is actually the application for the full project that again, is a hundred percent federally funded through the. AIP and the Cares Act, um, for the remarking of the main runway, uh, associated taxiways and relocation of two runway hold position signs. Um, approving the grant application would authorize mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to execute the grant agreement as well for AIP forty, forty-three. Uh, however, we do typically bring that back to the governing body as a final decision on that. Uh, staff recommends approving the application for AIP forty-three, and again, the total cost of this project is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eight. Dollars and is a hundred percent funded by the FAA and the Cares Acts.
This is Commissioner.
Okay.
I make the motion, we approve the application for federal assistance for the airfield remarking project at the Garden City Regional Airport Improvement. Program three dash twenty dash zero zero dash twenty-four dash forty-three.
Do we have a second?
This is Shannon Dick, I'll second.
So it's been seconded, so let's go ahead and roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna?
Aye.
Mayor Unruh, aye. So it passes five to zero. I'll tell you, uh, Commissioner Sessna might have that memorized if we would, and one, one more on that, that number. He did that. Pretty good. I was impressed, so.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rochelle. Uh, Commissioners, if it's okay, we would uh, request that you pull item H two. Off the agenda, off the consent agenda, and we. off the agenda, off the consent agenda and we will, uh, um, discuss it separately. So if there's no objection, I'll invite, uh, Jennifer Cunningham, um, to uh, walk you through your consideration to approve a contract with McAllen Gordon. For the construction manager at Risk Services for the new aquatics facility. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, um, this is the next step in our construction manager at Risk. Um, services that we talked about previously. During the March seventeenth meeting, um, you all approved for us to go over and request qualifications to hire a construction manager at risk. We received, um, as, as you've previously been told, we received eight, um, sets of qualifications from different firms. We reviewed those as a committee, narrowed those to four, which we interviewed. And then, um, the committee provided a recommendation to you at the May second meeting. Um, at that time, you all selected McAllen Gordon based on the recommendation of the committee to be your construction manager at risk for the new aquatics facility. Um, what, what happens next is that, um, they're really going to jump into this pre-construction phase. Which is what this, um, particular, um, agreement gets us started into. You'll notice that I included in the fiscal note, all of their fees for throughout the project. However, what we're talking about here only, um, authorizes them to spend up to the five thousand dollars, um, during the pre-construction piece of this. Um, they will be back before you, um, shortly here in, here in the next few meetings to provide the, um, GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price. Um, as you have previously, um, been made aware, that's the time that this all becomes a project that's moving forward. And that we're actually, um, beginning, beginning demolition, beginning, um, construction of the new facility and, and that sort of thing. So there are two agreements, um, attached here. We did, and the reason we pulled this off of the consent agenda is, um, my error, my, my error in, um, going through these contracts. Um, the AIAs are pretty standard for the most part and I missed the, a section that, um, talked, um, section five point two. That talked about, um, how any savings from the, um, project would be divvied up between the owner. Which is the city and the contractor, which is McAllen Gordon. And so Matt and I had some discussions, I had discussions with McAllen Gordon and then also with Matt about that. Because it was different than what we'd done in the past. Um, what we have done on some of the other projects is a hundred percent. Um, all savings goes a hundred percent to the owner and, and what you'll find here is what we have, um, provided in the, this agreement. Is that, um, once the, once we're into the project and the project is complete, um, the guaranteed maximum price. If less that, um, if you take out the, um, contingency fee, which is put in there in case. There's two, two pieces of the contingency fee, there's the owner contingency, which is, um, a little bit of wiggle room for us. If we come up with something different or upgrade something or, or make a change, um, that's within that allotted maybe two to three percent of the total contingency fee. And then the other part of the contingency fee is a contractor's contingency fee that deals with, um, things related specifically to the construction of the project. That, um, are unforeseen. So in doing that, what this does is basically takes out the, um. If, once you get to the end of the project, the GMP, less the contingency fee, then if there's any savings, then that savings would be split fifty fifty between us and the contractor, so owner and contractor, instead of a hundred percent savings going to the owner. Um, so some might ask why we would do that, um, and I'll, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have related to that. But I also wanted Todd here because I wanted him to be able to, from his profession, be able to explain to you why this is, um, something that we included. Um, and what, um, the reason for that is, is because it, it, the idea behind it is the, it incentivizes the contractor to come in even lower than that guaranteed maximum price. So if they are going to get a piece of, um, any savings after, you know, not including that contingency piece. If they're going to get savings off of that, then every single chance that they see or that comes up for a savings, they're going to want to capture that. Because not only are we getting part of that, they're getting part of that. Um, and so it, it incentivizes them. Now, the argument should be said is that when you partner with someone like this, you want them to always be incentivized to save you money. Because you want them to be doing the best work possible for you. Um, but this is the arrangement that McAllen Gordon, um, uh, starts with, uh, from there. It is not a standard AIA, but it is where they start with in their contract agreements. Um, and then the change that we made, um, is that we would, we took out the, um, contingency portion. Because we felt like that's not some, something that we wanted to be included in the savings that we would split fifty fifty. Any additional questions that you have for me, um, based on this, with this change, um, staff would request that you approve these. Um, and we are comfortable with that, um, and Todd is here and I am here, I'll answer anything that I can. And if I can't, I'll pass it off to Todd to answer.
That'd be great to hear from Todd, thank you Jennifer.
You bet. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great to see y'all again. I'm glad we're on to this next step. I think this is, uh, a great stepping stone for us to start our engagement and join the design team and bring you all the best project we possibly can. Uh, here in just a few weeks with a guaranteed maximum price. Um, and I'll, I'll start this conversation briefly by just sharing that we perform these projects. Every contract is slightly different and it's only driven by the individuals and the entity that we are engaging with. And what I mean by that is, um, as an example, I shared with Jennifer earlier today that we do a ton of work for K State University. And they are, in fact, look at this as a, a mutual benefit. So we have a shared savings clause with the university for all of our contracts, they see it as a positive. Um, other municipalities might say, you know what, we just want a hundred percent shared savings hu- back to us. And we are one thousand percent comfortable with that arrangement as well. So it's really up to your, your mindset where you think, uh, you would like this structure to be established. Um, Jennifer is a thousand percent right also that, you know, we are going to work on your behalf. The benefit of a construction management process and the transparent process is, we're going to look every opportunity we possibly can to make this project as efficient as it possibly can be. So we can stretch your dollars and push as much into this, um, budget bag as we possibly can. And, uh, create the most amenities into your facility as possible. So that will never change regardless of what this clause looks like long term. But, you know, financially, there is benefit to all of us. If we can drive value into this cost, extend your budget, allow those dollars to be reinvested into the project wherever possible. And this is a financial incentive for us to do absolutely our very best every step of the way. And I'm kind of cutting my own knees out from under me here because I'm going to tell you, we're going to do that anyways, you know? So that, this is just simply a starting point that we like to propose, um, as a mutual meet in the middle, kind of an arrangement. Um, and we can take this any direction you might prefer, because they're always slightly different from municipality to municipality. And at this point, we started with the fifty fifty shared savings, we're going to take that contingency bucket, set it off to the side. One hundred percent of those contingency dollars that are saved on the project would come back to you. And we establish milestones throughout the course of, of the project to evaluate, how far along are we with construction? Let's say we're fifty percent done with construction and we've only spent twenty five percent of our contingency dollars. We would come back to you and say, there might, we feel comfortable with where we're at, let's talk about your savings. Are you going to want to reduce your overall project cost or do you want to potentially go buy up and enhance this facility with these savings? Um, and that's going to be your decision as we go along and we'll just continue to meet and present those opportunities to you as we navigate the course of construction. So that's how the contingency process would work. This is kind of your decision on the structure that you think is most beneficial for Garden City.
So, Todd, I want to say thank you for, I, I mean, you had some stiff competition, so I mean, I think it speaks a lot to what you've done and I mean, there were some really great people who put bids in and so us choosing you, yeah, we have a high, very high expectation, so.
Oh, you bet.
And, um, and because this is very important to all of us, as you've seen a struggle through this whole change. Um, I, so I really appreciate you saying the contingencies aside and I, that, looking for enhancements or reduced costs. I really appreciate that, that part of that. I am comfortable, um, if Jennifer and Matt, and then again, this idea of the fifty fifty. But I'd like to hear if there's any other discussion from other commissioners on this or questions?
Mayor, I'll make the motion, this is Commissioner Sesna, I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, pre-construction contract with McAllen and Gordon.
This is Shannon.
Commissioner Dick, did you second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, this is Shannon Dick, I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded, let's go through our roll call, so we have Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sesna?
Aye.
Mayor Anru, aye, thank you so much, thank you, and so it passes five to zero. Todd, thank you for being here and Jennifer, thank you for looking out for all of us, i- including McAllen, we're really, we really appreciate that, so.
You bet, thank you much.
So man, I know we talked about a break and, um, I, this, I know we have a few, uh, so I guess what I'd like to do, could we do the final before we get to the, um, budget? And then we'll take a break right before the budget and then that way we can kind of sit, stand up and stretch. Um, if that works for the other commissioners or if anyone else needs a break right away, let me know, please. Okay, if not, let's go ahead and take up those other two items and then we'll take a break right before we, we dive into the budget.
Thank you Mayor, item, item twelve E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the low bid received fro- for the geometric improvement on Kansas Avenue. For the widening project number twenty eight KA dash forty seven sixty five oh one from Smoky Hill LLC of Salina. I'll invite Sam Curran to invite or to, uh, present this item. Sam?
Thank you Matt. Uh, on the background of this, uh, document, the Kansas Department of Transportation and the city entered into an agreement dated April one, two thousand nineteen for the reconstruction and widening of Kansas Avenue. The project starts approximately a hundred and thirty feet east of Third and Fourth Street and proceeds east to approximately three hundred feet west of Belmont Place. Which will complete the widening of Kansas Avenue from Main Street, uh, to Jenny Barker Road. Uh, we also entered into an agreement with KDOT, uh, October fifteenth. Where the Secretary of Transportation lets, lets all of our C clip projects. This will be the norm moving forward, uh, until we get recertified or we have a PE on staff. So this will probably be the norm in the future on letting city projects. The city's estimated cost of the project was one million three hundred sixty seven thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars and fifteen, or fifty cents. The project is funded at eighty five percent KDOT, fifteen percent city with a maximum of a million dollars from KDOT. On Wednesday, May the twentieth, uh, the Kansas widening project was opened and read aloud by KDOT in Topeka. The low and only bidder was received from Smoky Hills LLC from Salina, Kansas for one million one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars. When we went through the bids, we kind of put together a cost summary in this table to kind of explain, uh, how our share gets, um, calculated there. So the low, the low bid for construction was one million one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars. There was an increase from the estimate of fifty one thousand three hundred and ninety seven dollars. The design of the project is city expense and we've already expended or have expended that money. And it's ninety five thousand nine hundred dollars. And then on top of that, for city share, we'll have inspection. Um, and it's two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars with an increase of eighty two thousand nine hundred dollars. One of the reasons why the, uh, increase was in the inspection is we had the project, uh, for a ninety, ninety day completion. They increased that to a hundred and thirty days, so that increased the inspections for that project. So if the governing body approves the project, the city share for the Kansas Avenue widening project is five hundred and one thousand eight hundred and twenty seven dollars. An increase of the one thirty four to ninety seven. The funding for the city share requires some discussion on what funding sources to use for this project. Staff is re- recommending two options. The first one is using a twenty twenty GO bond. And the second option would be to use a twenty twenty federal exchange funds of five hundred and one thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars. With the remaining funds coming from special trafficway. The governing body may reject a bid and have KDOT rebid the project August nineteenth of twenty twenty. Which will move commission approval to the first meeting in September with construction starting in October. According to KDOT, uh, since this is federally passed through money, the rule states that this project must start construction in twenty twenty. KDOT, by setting the construction days, uh, a hundred and thirty days, our window of for completion becomes narrow for twenty twenty. With no guarantee, the rebid would improve the city's share. So there would be an op- there could be a chance that the project would be open through the winter months. So your alternatives, okay, and then you also, the governing body can reject the project and submit for a future C clip application. The next application would be for FY twenty twenty four. So the alternatives in front of the governing body would be approve the low bid from Smoky Hill LLC from Salina. For one million one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven, using twenty twenty GO bonds for the city's share. Alternative two, approve the low bid from Smoky Hill LLC from Salina, Kansas. For one, one million one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven, using the twenty twenty federal exchange funds. And the twenty twenty special trafficway budget for the city's share. The third option would be, or the third alternative would reject the low bid and request KDOT to rebid the project in August of twenty twenty. And your fourth, uh, alternative would reject the low bid, resubmit the project in a future C clip application. And that would be FY twenty twenty four or later. The recommendation is in front of you would be if the governing body places a high priority on completing this project before twenty twenty four. That was a slight, uh, typo area. Staff recommends alternative two, approve the low bid from Smoky Hill LLC from Salina. For one million one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars. With the following funding sources for the city's share, the twenty twenty federal exchange funds and the twenty twenty special trafficway budget. Uh, another recommendation to consider, if the commissioners wish to consider alternate uses for the twenty twenty federal exchange funds. In the development of the twenty twenty one city budget, then staff recommends alternative four. Reject the low bid and resubmit the project in a future C clip application. And again, that would be FY twenty twenty four or later. The physical notes for this, for alternative one, the ninety five thousand nine hundred has already been expended for design and survey. The remaining four hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty seven would be bonded in a twenty twenty GO bond. Alternative two would be the nine, ninety five thousand nine hundred was already been expended for the design and survey. The remaining four hundred and five thousand nine hundred and twenty seven would be paid for with the twenty twenty federal exchange funds. Plus the special trafficway funds. Alternative three, the ninety five thousand nine hundred has already been expended for the design and survey. And the balance of the city's share would be bonded in twenty twenty GO bond. Or the twenty twenty federal exchange funds plus special trafficway funds. For alternative four, the ninety five thousand nine hundred has already been expended for design and survey. No additional cost to the city until another C clip, uh, application is approved. Again, that would be twenty twenty four.
So Sam, this is, uh, Mayor Andrew, I just want to ask a couple of questions. So those federal funds, they are not needed for anything with the Eighth Street project, is that correct? It's already been, we've got everything we need for that?
That was one of our, that, that's one of, uh, uh, staff's concerns that, you know, across the state. The bids have been a little bit different, been a little higher. And so we're a little concerned that we're right at the limit at Eighth Street. We're going to need another a hundred and thirty five thousand for the alternates. And so we're, we have a little concern about that. And then you also have the Campus Drive, uh, project coming up, uh, for being used as the, uh, detour. So there's a few projects that in the list that we have some concerns about.
So my other question, and I'll turn it over to the other commissioners, so this I- So my other question, and I'll turn it over to the commissioners. So this idea about now C clips are not guaranteed, is that correct? They're, they're a bit, they're an application process and you have to be selected?
That is correct, but the city has been fortunate enough that we normally get those. We have not been denied one for a while. I did reach out to KDOT and said, because of some financial or financial situation, there could be an opportunity that the governing body would reject this and do it at a later date. I asked him if, if that would be would that, would you hold that against us? And they said, no, they understood that. They're going through the same process.
So commissioners, does anyone have any questions or comments before we make, before we take up this issue?
Only comment I'd say is this is probably if we're looking at areas to save money where the, the population of the city probably wouldn't notice. This is probably one of the places where we could save the money now. And then like Sam says, reapply in a couple of years and, and finish up this. It seems like this might be a easy place to delay. And even if you put on a G O bond where you're not paying it right away, still that's, that's a little bit of savings each year while we might need to be making those decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dick, does anyone else have any, any comments on that? Yeah, I'm really torn on this project because I I mean, I think we have, we've spent, we've expended lots of dollars. I'm disappointed that we only had one bidder and I, is that Sam, is that something that indicated is going to continue or is it just because of where we're at because of COVID nineteen? I'm just, I'm curious about your thoughts, why there were no additional bids?
Well, we believe it was a timing issue. The Jenny Barker project bid right after that. And what we heard was a lot of the contractors, since that was a fairly large project, they were concentrating on that. So we think there's other contractors out there that are interested in this project, but they either missed the deadline or they were paying more attention to the Jenny Barker project.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm implying to agree with Commissioner Dick. This might be a place that I, I hate. Yeah, this is a hard one for me. Any other comments from Commissioner before we?
Well, this is Commissioner Euler and to Commissioner Dick's point about, you know, worrying about funds for the Eighth Street projects or Campus Drive, which are pretty high priority projects and they are projects that there is especially the need going along Eighth Street, but you know, with Campus Drive, all of the needs that are there that I would really. I mean, even though I understand the importance of widening that little section that's left, I don't know that it outweighs some of these other projects, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, has anyone ready to make a motion or? And so Sam, I mean, there's been a lot of information. I just want to make it clear. So if we would decide to do the project later, would that be reject the low bid and resubmit the project in the future C clip application?
That would be alternative four.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion to reject the low bid and resubmit the in a future C clip application F Y twenty twenty-four later. Do we have a second?
This is Shannon Dick. I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. So we'll go ahead and we'll go down and make a roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Nay.
Mayor Andrew, aye. Okay, thank you, Sam. I think you have the next item also.
Mayor Commissioners, the next item is twelve F. The governing body asked to consider and approve the low bid for the construction of Jenny Barker Road, East Side Drainage Pond and Water Main Improvements. Sam?
Okay, thank you, Matt. Just before I get into this, Mayor, I just wanted to say on the Kansas Avenue that we do have a bad spot there just east of Second Street. We have ransom cost figures. So you're looking to hire contractor about eight thousand dollars to do that, or the city can do it for about eighteen hundred dollars. So I would recommend and visit with Andy about getting that bad spot done because you, you're not doing this until twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Sam. Yeah, that doesn't need to be done.
Okay, so background in this, I'm going to go through it. There's a lot of moving parts here. And so we're going to go through it. I have Andy here to go through or Adam here to go through some of the attachments. In in November of twenty seventeen, the, the Fenny County voters approved a countywide sales retail sales tax levy to create funding seven million dollars for the improvement of Jenny Barker Road. These improvements consist of reconstructing the roadway to a three lane urban street section with five foot sidewalk and ten foot sidewalk, street lighting, storm sewer, new reinforcement concrete box and a common utility trench, trench. The one thing that we did leave off that list, it also included the traffic signal at the Kansas Jenny Barker intersection. The storm sewer along Jenny Barker Road with Will Outlet to the East Side Retention Pond via piping through the T Bone Neighborhood. Due to the severe disturbance of the gravel streets in this county subdivision by installing of large storm pipes, the streets and the ditches of the subdivision will be regraded and the inlets will be added along the ditch to help provide an outlet for standing water that is common in this area. The East Side Drainage Pond Improvement consists of constructing a retention pond east of the Jenny Barker Road Improvement. Extension of the Showman Avenue sixty inch storm pipe to said pond and rerouting of the Walmart ditch across Jenny Barker Road and Chapel Heights property to drain to the drainage ditch number two. The East Side Retention Pond is an outfall for most of the Jenny Barker Road storm drainage and thus is critical to the construction of the Jenny Barker project. The projects have been designed together as one project. Staff provided a document to both governing bodies at a May two thousand eighteen joint meeting with estimates of the Jenny Barker project, which I've identified the waterline improvement of three hundred and twenty-five thousand excluding inspection, which had not previously been shown with the relocated utilities because no line was present. The case was made that development of the area will require such a waterline and the most cost effective time to build it would be during the construction of the road. In the meeting, the installation of waterline was not explicitly added or removed as part of the Jenny Barker Road Sales Tax Project. This waterline would start at the intersection of Showman Avenue and Jenny Barker Road, then north to the Walmart ditch to a dead end waterline. City staff met with Fenny County staff on Thursday, May twenty-eighth, and will also meet with the Sales Tax Oversight Committee on June first to develop a consensus recommendation regarding the inclusion of this waterline as part of the Jenny Barker Sales Tax Project. The design of the project commenced in late two thousand eighteen with right of way acquisition beginning in the spring of two thousand nineteen and finalized by the end of the year. Design was finalized in the spring of twenty twenty. The project bid as a single project consists of Jenny Barker improvement, East Side Drainage Pond Improvement and the Water Extension Improvement was, was open and read aloud via a virtual bid opening hosted as a web meeting and conference call for all bidders. The low bid was received from Spore Land Development, Inc. of Oakley for seven million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. So below that is a bid tabulation summary for your review. Because the project consists of three projects with separate funding sources and analysis of the bid versus budgets is more complicated than is typical. The various work items must be allocated to the project. Most aspects are fairly broken between the project. However, there was some gray areas where assignment is less clear. These consisted, these consisted of primarily of one sixty inch storm main line B. And you'll see that in attachment, construction inspection and the bid alternate. A presentation discussion regarding the breakdown of the low bid using staff's recommendations on allocation is attached and will be presented by staff. Staff will also review anticipating phasing. The bidding documents reserve the right of the city to, to review qualifications, both technical and financial of the bidder and its subcontractors. Staff is familiar with Spore, who is a, who is KDOT pre-qualified and regularly manages project of this scale for both KDOT Nebraska DOT and municipalities. Spore's major subcontractors are Vogue Construction and Middle Creek Construction with no staff reservations. If awarded, Spore intends to start the project as soon as possible. Alternatives one, approve the low bid alternative and alternate one bid from Spore Land Development of Oakley for seven million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents with the following funding sources. A Jenny Barker Road Improvement Sales Tax for five hundred, five million, one hundred and ninety thousand, sixty-two dollars and nine, ninety-six. B East Side Drainage Pond Improvement, proposed G O bond for one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight seventy point seventy. The waterline improvement proposed G O bond with an annual utility appropriations of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand and thirty-five cents. Bid alternate one, purchasing asphalt millings from the special trafficway budget for eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine point eight five. Your alternate two, approve the low bid and alternate one bid from Spore Land Development, Inc. from Oakley for seven million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents with all alternate distribution from funding sources between projects. Jenny Barker Road Improvement Sales Tax, and I'm going to not read all the dollar amounts there. The water improvement would be also recommended with Sales Tax. And then also there would be potential savings of five, from the five percent contingencies, potential savings from Black Hill relocation, potential savings from the signal installation and the difference from the water utility. B East Side Drainage Pond Improvement, proposed G O bond one, one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight seventy point seventy. And bid alternate one, purchasing asphalt millings from special trafficway for eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine point eight five. Alternative three, approve the low bid and alternate bid from Spore land development from Oakley for seven million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents with the following funding sources. A Jenny Barker Improvement Sales Tax, East Side Drainage Pond, Proposed G O Bond. See Waterline Improvement, Water Reserves and bid alternate one, purchasing asphalt millings from Street Materials. The fourth alternative would approve a change order from removing the waterline improvement from the low base bid. Add the bid alternate one bid from Spore Land Development of Oakley for six million, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. And alternative five, reject the low bid. Recommendation, staff recommends alternative two, approve the bid from Spore Land Development for seven million, seven hundred and, or seven millions, seventy-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and two point eight with alternative distribution of funding sources between projects. Any remaining expense for the waterline improvements not covered under the Jenny Barker Road Sales Tax Budget and not explicitly approved for additional funding by the city and the county commissioners would be paid for by the water, city water utility. The physical note, based on allocations from the recommend, recommend recommended alternative two between the projects, five million, one hundred and ninety thousand and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents of the bid will be incurred by the Sales Tax Funding for the Jenny Barker Road Improvement. Two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents of the bid will be incurred by the Sales Tax Funding for the water line improvement, not to exceed the Sales Tax project budget unless explicitly approved by both governing bodies with the difference incurred by the water reserve and the one point seven or one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents of the bid be incurred by the proposed G O bond funding for the East Side Drainage Pond Improvement. And the bid alternate of eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents will be incurred by the Street Department with, with their normal budget. That was mouthful.
For our last agenda item to go through, that one was a
So I'm sure that was just as clear as I could make it.
Commissioners, I'd like to add that yesterday during the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, the, the strategy that could generally be described as alternative two was endorsed through that group that had representation from the county chairperson's a member of that board and, and the county administrator sat in the meeting along with county treasurer with me. I think the idea would be that the, you know, the savings within the budgeted amount are available to that water line project to be included and that you know, after the, if there happens to be an amount above that, say those contingencies and savings don't happen and aren't realized and aren't sufficient to cover the total cost of that water line add-in. But at that time, there would be the opportunity to maybe go back and get a recommendation from the Oversight Committee that those could also be included to draw down from. But that committee would then have more information available to it as far as how receipts had come in and how other projects were coming along price-wise to know if they have the capacity to go grab that extra increment. So I would say that based on the input yesterday from the over, the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, that the, that the strategy behind the recommended alternative two is supported.
This is Mayor Andrew. I agree with Matt. They were very, they're very supportive of including the waterline, understanding it's going to be incurred. And so I do think alternative two, if, if offer a motion, if that would be something I think that, that everyone's really
Mayor, before you make that motion, I have Adam here and we've got some attachments and I think it might be beneficial for you to look at those attachments and also for the public to look at them so they can see where the improvements are. So I'm going to get out of the seat and let Adam have this.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I was getting off easy.
Well, you might know, you might have to also reread the whole memo that we're going to see who did the best when
So yeah, on this page here, you can see this is just the, the three bids we received. So obviously we, we got a favorable bid, favorable bid from Spore. You know, I think their, their proximity helps lend to that, along with other items. That's, that doesn't fully account for it, but so this is the full breakdown of the, we won't go through this. But if you were curious, you know, where any of the, the items fell, you're obviously welcome, welcome to look through that. If you have any questions, we can, we can look at it, but otherwise we'll, we'll scroll through it. So this is the, this is kind of the key sheet, looking at the budget stuff. You know, everything that, that Sam went through kind of boils down to this sheet. Along the top line, there's the, the base bid for construction. So those are the numbers that we're actually considering, you know, as part of this motion. But they're obviously, they're not the only pieces to the puzzle, right? So we have our, the construction bid along the top item and then below that are all the other costs associated with, with doing the project. So we've included a five percent contingency. You know, when you're doing a roadway project, there's just, there's things that come up that you just don't anticipate, the most common being poor sub soils. Sometimes it goes great and there's none. Other times you just run into a lot of bad soils where you know, their equipment starts sinking into the mud and they can't even put the base material down or whatever. And so you have to overestimate that out and obviously they have to be compensated for that. So we want some contingency for those kind of unknowns, you know, built in there. So there's, you know, we don't end up in trouble in the end. Then also, you know, we had our design costs that have mostly been expended. Um then also, you know, we had our design costs uh that have mostly been expended at this point. Uh we have our inspection, our inspection costs uh which are in line with the budget on this project, so we don't have the same discussion as Kansas Avenue there. We have on the, so you can see how each of those are allocated between the projects. The construction inspection, the mobilization, uh a lot of those kind of lump sum items, we basically just allocated. Proportionally between the three projects, um we figured out how much the actual work. Of each project cost and then we just allocated based on percentage, um those other items, just as equitable, I guess, as we could come up with. Um so that's how that construction inspection is allocated between those three, um you know, actual, actual effort in the field may vary from that, but that's pretty hard to quantify. Um we had, uh there's anticipated change order you see there for the um for the the east side drainage project. Some of these things, we actually have firmer numbers now than we did when we put this together last week. Um that will actually be around a hundred thousand, which sounds bad, but to put it in context. Um what that is, is we allowed while this project was being bid, we allowed excavation to continue at at the Foltz pit. Uh site and um that posed some challenges from our aspect from from bidding the project because. We don't know what we're bidding because we don't know how much dirt is being taken out of it. Um so we basically took information from the contractor, some field measurements. Of of what had been taken out so far and some estimations by the local contractors that were removing dirt and. And then scaled it back a little and made an estimate of how much savings we were going to get from them taking dirt out of there. We estimated about a three hundred thousand dollars, basically what happens is we estimated a three hundred thousand dollar savings and we only got a two hundred thousand dollar savings. Um so we have to add that hundred thousand back in, so it sounds bad that we're adding hundred thousand back in. Uh or that we're adding hundred thousand already to what we bid, but in reality, it's just we overestimated how much we were going to save. So we're still coming two hundred thousand dollars ahead by allowing that to happen, if that makes sense. So and then we have a Black Hills relocation, um that's an item that kind of came up at the last minute. If you've driven by there in the last day or two, um you'll see there's a two hundred foot long. Um eight inch, ten inch round uh metal pipe along the north end of the project on the east side there on Chapel's property. They're getting ready to install today or tomorrow, um where that um it's it's their their high pressure gas line, they have to get down under some of our storm infrastructure. And that is in a private easement, and so because it's in a private easement, um we don't get to just tell them to move. We have to reimburse them for their expenses, so and they have to live tap that gas line, they have a crew coming in out of Tulsa to live tap that gas line. So it's it's not a, not a cheap maneuver, so um it's it's just something that has to happen, but um it's. Kind of an estimated expense, uh but we're not too far off in that estimate, so. Um so those are the things, you know, that basically add on to the 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 actual bid we're considering today to get you to the project total numbers there for each of the three projects. Um and then then the next kind of section there is just stuff that's kind of not even part of the project per se, but still coming out of these budgets. So we have a seven million dollar Jenny Barker budget, well, we're kind of setting aside four hundred of that for the traffic signal. Um it's not part of this immediate project, but it's kind of set aside out of that budget. Um so that's where, you know, basically add all those numbers together and you end, we end up with about seventy six thousand dollars left in the Jenny Barker side of the budget. Um and then we're about one point eight on the on the east side drainage, so. You know, these are the numbers you need to consider when looking at the funding, but of the of our actual decision here today, it's just the that top line. Yeah, this gets into the breakup of each project, um again, won't get into that unless there's specific questions. Um a quick overview of the project, um I think all the commissioners were at the last. That this current commission was at the last combined city council meeting, we talked about the project, but um you know, again, it spans from Showman all the way up to Mary Street. Um widening from three lanes to uh or from two lanes to three uh with curb and gutter, storm drainage, a ten foot sidewalk on the west side. Um that red line, you can see that's the utility corridor relocating all the utilities into a common trench, uh the water line is the blue line. And and then all the running down Porter House and Tenderloin are the storm sewers that connect over to the. To the east side retention pond you see there in pink, so this is kind of a ten thousand foot view here. Um I put the north end there, you see that you can see the ditch relocations, the pink, the pink lines. Um running, running over to DD two, yep, right there, Matt, yep, that would be the relocation of that Walmart ditch that Sam mentioned. So um we kind of want to scroll through a little bit, I kind of broke it up into little, little more um zoomed in detail you can see. Um it kind of shows, it sounds like it's not a a big issue after the sales tax meeting yesterday, but we just wanted to show where the the pieces were broken up between the projects. Physically on the ground, uh so the areas kind of highlighted in pink are basically east side drainage portions of the project. And then the areas in yellow are the are the Jenny Barker road portions and then the blue lines, the water line. So it just kind of gives you an idea on the ground where these pieces are. We kind of just keep scrolling to the south, I suppose. So this is starting at the north end, working south. And then once we get to the, once we get to the side roads, basically you saw that the storm sewer starts at the north end, starts coming south. Once it gets to Porter House, it turns and goes down Porter House um and over to the pond. Go ahead and on to the next page, and then at the very south end, kind of the opposite, so you see the pink line there, um that is the. There, right there, yep, right there is a connection to the existing, there's a sixty inch storm line coming down Showman from Menards. Uh that basically just drains into that little pond and overloads that pond there on the corner, so we'll be tying into it right at that inlet that Matt's cursor is on. And uh running that pipe all the way to the east side drainage and that pipe was basically part of the east side drainage pond. Before the Jenny Barker road project was was ever conceived, uh so that's why that that line has been. Allocated or or assigned to the east side drainage uh project. Um we are, again, it gets a little gray area for efficiencies and whatnot, we are tying into that line with some storm inlets on Jenny Barker. Um we also are running another second sixty inch line you see there um from the west side of Jenny Barker. To the pond, basically directly to the pond, that line is not, will not be heavily used at this time, um but it is sized for future development. At um on the west side of Jenny Barker. Um and obviously, again, we do tie some inlets into that line. Um if we were not doing the east side drainage pond, there would still be a need for a line running down that road connecting those inlets to the pond. Um but it wouldn't be two sixty inch lines, so that's where, you know, we kind of talked about a little bit of that gray area between the two projects. Um then this just shows the lines running down those uh those side roads. And kind of improving the drainage situation, the side roads a little bit. And then once we, and then the pond itself, which is mostly east side drainage. Um and then at the bottom of that, of those, where those three pipes outlet into the pond. As you can probably imagine, there's going to be, have to be a lot of really big rocks down there to keep the water from just eroding like crazy. So we kind of just proportion that that area accordingly to the two projects. So that's why the the yellow kind of sneaks down in there in the midst of the pink, um but overall, that whole area is part of the east side drainage improvements. So is that the last page? Oh, uh yeah, I did want to go over just phasing with you a little bit, um especially since Sam mentioned sport is looking at starting this project as. As soon as we'll allow them to, um so we have a a fairly elaborate phasing plan, but it boils down. Fairly simply to um the the north end that you see hatched kind of with the double line hatches. Uh that area will be closed completely off, uh closed to traffic um for pretty much the remainder of the or the extent, the entire duration of the project. I believe spores looking at closing that right from the get-go so they can start digging that channel out and that will allow them to put uh the utilities through there. So you know, there's a lot of um moving pieces, obviously, um but we can't get a lot of those utilities through there until the old ditch is filled in. You can't fill in the old ditch until the new ones cut. So that area will be closed off from their south, um from, you know, about two thirds of the way up there, south area, you see kind of shaded in gray. That will be phased in basically east west, so they will widen out the west side with some temporary surfacing, just some gravel. And allow trap, kind of push traffic over partway on the existing road and partway on that temporary gravel. And they will construct the east side of the road, while they're constructing the side of the road, cars can that can access those homes uh via the west side of the road. Then once they're done with the east side, cars can obviously drive on that new pavement on the east side, they can construct the west side with really uh. With really little traffic interference at that point because there's nobody accessing that from on the west side. Um they'll dig the pond, they'll probably, they'll start the north end, then they're gonna start digging the pond, then they'll have to start working the the storms who are up those side roads before they. I kind of jumped the gun talking about Jenny Barker, but they'll, they'll have to get the storm sewer to Jenny Barker, obviously, before they can start constructing it or else there'd be nowhere for the water to go. So um that's kind of the phasing we're looking at, and then at the very end of the project, the Showman intersection will be shut down for um just a couple of weeks. To reconstruct that intersection. Um but the north half, the north part of the project has to be open before they can do that, so that the people that live in that area don't have to drive all the way to Farmland Road just to get to town. So um what what we need to get with Jamie and this and the city's pretty much immediately after this gets awarded to get word out. To the public that this is going to be closed soon. And that's pretty much all I had. Am I forgetting anything, Sam?
Thanks, Adam. Any, any questions for Adam at all? The pictures really tell the story, I really appreciate you um taking the time to make them up for our packet and also I really. I think they really gave a lot of information to the tax oversight committee also, so.
So our recommendation, Mayor, would be uh to approve alternative two.
Which we have a motion.
Move that we, uh this is Shannon Dick, um I moved that we approve alternative to approve the bid for land development for seven million seven hundred and. Ninety thousand nine hundred two dollars and eighty cents with an alternate distribution funding source between the projects. So forth.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Commissioner Euler.
So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on 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 the motion? If not, we'll go ahead and we'll call for a um a vote or call for your input, uh Commissioner Euler, your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Cessna?
Aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye, so it passes, five to zero, thank you, Adam, I guess it's it's time to let everybody know, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh we're all caught up and ready for the budget, uh so is now the time that you wanted to.
Can we take a ten minute or would that work? Okay, so well, we're we can at that three thirty and we will take a ten minute break and we'll be back here at three thirty and go over the budget, thank you. And with that, I know, Matt, we are up to the review of tax funds.
Correct, Mayor, um, the, we're getting, uh, further along in the budget deliberations, uh, for the preparation of the twenty twenty one budget, and, uh, uh, you see the list on the agenda before you, and this is the review of, uh, tax funds that include the Recreation Commission, employee benefit, or the Recreation Commission Employee Benefits, the Recreation Commission, uh, budget itself, Fund Twenty Five, bond and interest, Fund Forty, airport sixty, the airport improvement sixty one, and the review of some internal service funds, uh, help, the health insurance, the health insurance reserve. And we're gonna start today on a review of the general fund, and we're gonna get through some of what I would call the administrative departments. Uh, and so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melinda Hitz, who's, uh, who's back with us and, uh, able to go over, oh, go over all of these budgets, so Melinda, take it away.
Good afternoon, uh, we will start with Fund Number Twenty Four, and that is the Recreation Com- Commission Employee Benefits. Uh, as you remember, a couple of years ago, we decided to, uh, start a new fund for the Rec Commission for their employee benefits. So it happened in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, we had a, you know, we carry over zero on the city's, uh, cash balance. We budget for one and one-half mils of the city's valuation for the Recreation Commission Employee Benefit Fund. We're two hundred and sixty thousand in twenty twenty for ad valorem tax, and two ninety-nine, nine fifty in twenty twenty one. Uh, we pay out the full amount that we receive, including motor vehicle taxes that go into the fund in twenty twenty one, uh, to the Recreation Commission. And I just wanna let you know, uh, I looked at the, um, Recreation Commission audit, and the Employee Benefit Fund actually, uh, was nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five to the good at the end of last year, so that's always good for them to have a cash carryover in their funds on their side of the books. Is there any questions there? Fund Twenty Five is the actual Recreation Commission Operating Fund. This fund is limited to five mils of ad valorem tax. We carry over zero, we pay out everything to the Recreation Commission every year. Uh, we budget for the five mils plus the allocation of the motor vehicle taxes. So that amounts to a payment in twenty twenty of a million, one thirty-three, one fifty to the Recreation Commission. And in twenty twenty one, a million, two sixty-seven, one fifty. And looking at their audit at the end of twenty nineteen, uh, their general fund had a growth of ten thousand, fifty-two dollars, uh, over the previous year. So, they're gaining cash balance in their funds, which is good.
This is Mayor Andrew on this, I just wanna make sure, so you're, so you're anticipating a slight growth this year in ad valorem tax?
Yes, we're budgeting, uh, we're hoping that our valuation will go up, uh, roughly between six and seven percent. So that's why the growth in ad valorem tax. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I think Aaron is on the, um, panel here, if he has anything to say.
Thanks, Melinda, this is Aaron Stewart, Superintendent of the Rec Commission, um, yeah, again, I think we're, uh, planning on having a quote-unquote "normal" year when our budget is submitted back to you, uh, for twenty twenty one. And we'll kinda see, our biggest fluctuation, obviously, um, we planned some contingencies for this year as far as, uh, whether or not we'll receive, uh, all the ad valorem taxes, and, um, for next year, we're, we're planning on normal with the recognition that, uh, we may have to make some hard decisions, uh, depending on how our fees, uh, what kinda fees we generate. So, um, we're obviously highly dependent on, uh, fee generation, which is about forty-five percent of our budget, so.
So, Aaron, this is Mayor Andrew, I just wanted to ask you, I know that, uh, you're reopening, and I mean, it's, it's a slow process, and I appreciate, um, I know we had a discussion about your phasing in plan, so I'm curious about, um, the gymnastics, I know it was just open and all of the COVID happened, so I'm sorry, yeah, it's, uh, if you've not seen the, the building and the whole is beautiful, but can, I just, I'm curious about that, and again, making sure how that's all gonna work for you guys.
Um, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll resume, uh, classes come next Monday, uh, June eighth, um, right now, uh, I, I'm anticipating about fifty percent registration through all of our programs, just, uh, um, I think there's a segment of the population that's ready to get back out there and be active, and we're here for them. Uh, I think there's also a segment of the population that's not quite ready to come back yet, and that's okay too, um, just so they know that we're here when they are ready. Obviously, it isn't great to open a building, run it for two weeks, and have great numbers just to turn around and shut it down for three months, but, uh, you know, we're gonna make the best of that situation. Obviously, um, for people that are curious, they can review our reopening plan, that's on our website, gcrec.com. Um, and it tells you about, uh, the kinda phased reopening and some of the additional, uh, steps that we're taking as far as making sure that, uh, we're not just cleaning, we're actually sanitizing. Um, and, and trying to keep, uh, people safe as possible and mitigate as much of the risk as possible.
No, I appreciate that, thank you so much, and I, the, the gymnastics building is what a great addition to Garden City and streets.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Fund Forty is the bond and interest fund, uh, we carried over four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two forty-three into twenty twenty. Uh, we have our ad valorem tax and motor vehicle taxes that go into here, a little bit on special assessments that are still left over from, um, very previous years. Uh, the PFC allocation, that is from the passenger facility charge. Uh, the reason this fund receives, uh, part of that allocation is due to the debt, uh, that we issue for the airport. So you see thirty-four thousand in twenty twenty and fifty thousand in twenty twenty one. The interest on the bonds and principal down below, uh, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven seventy-four in twenty twenty. A million, six forty-nine, two twelve in twenty twenty for principal, those are actual numbers. When you go over to the twenty twenty one column, uh, we're estimating down below, um, of course, I prepared this, uh, several weeks ago, but we were looking at the East Side Drainage at three million, and Kansas Avenue for a KDOT project at four hundred thousand. Uh, since the East Side Drainage came in much, much less than three million, and the Kansas Avenue project is being delayed, that annual debt service for twenty twenty one will change from three sixty to two hundred thousand. Uh, I'd like to add ten thousand into the five percent coverage, which that would give you a savings of roughly a hundred and fifty thousand when we readjust this budget for today's, um, capital projects that we just approved.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, then, uh, Fund Fifty Five is an internal service fund, it's our health insurance fund, uh, it goes along with the employee benefits, um. So we did carry over seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, forty-one dollars into twenty twenty. We are able to keep the city's share of the health insurance cost at eight hundred and twenty dollars per employee. The employees also make contributions, and we're keeping that level in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one at eight hundred and twenty thousand. The, uh, health insurance premium that we put, pay Blue Cross Blue Shield comes out of here, uh, we're looking at three point seven five in twenty twenty, uh, raising it up to four million in twenty twenty one. We also pu- pay for the Grow Well Clinic out of here, so you've got, uh, their clinic costs and the office space rental, and any of their supplies that they need there. So we have total expenses in twenty twenty at four million, three oh eight, two fifty, and then five million, oh eighty-four, seven fifty, budgeting the full fund in twenty twenty one. But we are estimating that we'll carry over four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred into twenty twenty two. I've got one more fund here, that's an internal service fund, and then if you have questions for Ally, I think she's, um, waiting in the wings. So Fund Fifty Six is the Health Insurance Reserve. Uh, we started the year with two million, two eighty-one, five fifty-six. The revenue that goes into here is, uh, interest income off of CDs. We also, since we have built up such a reserve with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they are refunding some of our premium payments. Uh, in twenty twenty, that amount was two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four ninety-one. And we're not estimating any for twenty twenty one, we're not, uh, wanting to count on that. We transferred to the general fund in twenty twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand. We're not showing any transfer for twenty twenty one, we may adjust that later on as we go through the budget. Uh, we're carrying over two million, one ninety-seven into twenty twenty one, and cash carryover going into twenty twenty two is at two point two one seven.
Melinda, on this fund, I, I, my question was, do we have a goal for this fund, or is it just, um, like, is it a three million dollar goal, or I'm just was curious?
It's always nice to have a reserve on health insurance, uh, and a three million dollar or four million dollar goal would be nice, uh, but we do need to use, um, we do need to be flexible to use these funds as we need it for the budget. Ally, would you like to add anything on health insurance?
Um, no, Melinda, I think you covered that, um, but mainly, of course, we are on the health insurance account, we are making sure that we're, uh, budgeting according to the contract with the Grow Well Clinic in order to be able to supply them with the things that they need, and then those reserve funds, yes, we won't have any idea if we'll, we will have any refund amounts. Um, we don't have any idea on those until the first of the year, um, once we hit our early renewal, well, um, which typically occurs in June or July, um, then we'll, we'll have a better idea of what those reserve funds look like.
Thank you. The next fund is the Airport Fund. Uh, we carried over into twenty twenty, a million, six seventy-four, two thirteen, uh, I do wanna remind you that one million dollars of that is the, uh, grant funds that we got from the state that we're gonna be moving over into the Project Fund that you talked, that we talked about earlier today for the terminal. Um, the Airport Fund is a taxing fund, but it's also kind of an enterprise fund. Uh, they do receive ad valorem tax, uh, in twenty twenty, it's nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, along with motor vehicle taxes. Then we go into the operation of the airport, and this is where it's kind of an enterprise fund, uh, they have electric collections, they have, uh, FBO payments. They charge for fuel, so you have a fuel flowage fee. Now, I would like to show you, in twenty twenty, we have made some reductions in some of those revenue line items, um, due to the situations that we're currently in right now, but we are budgeting in twenty twenty one to be normal. The next page behind that revenue sheet, you can see all of the annual lease payments. So you'll see your FBO payment there listed, you'll have your fuel flowage fee listed, the land lease, and then we also have hangar rents and, um, rental car areas. The landing fees are also shown there, uh, office rental, and then the flight deck restaurant. So those, there's a detail for your revenue, um, to get to those totals. So we have total revenue, um, of one million, four forty-three, oh eighty-seven in twenty twenty, one million, one eighty-nine, three hundred in twenty twenty one. The reason for that reduction in twenty twenty one is 'cause we're, we don't have to have as much ad valorem tax to, to make this budget work. So now we'll get into the expenses. Starting with advertising, now you do have, um, in your notebook, you have all of the detail of these expenses listed, Rochelle does a very good job in, in doing all the detail on that, if you wanted to pull that out as we go through, it's pretty easy to look at that way. We do a lot of advertising for the airport, that's, that's always, promo, it's lots of promotion, um, we have a, we used to have a contracted tower service, uh, as you can see in the previous year, sixty-two thousand, uh, but that has gone away. Some other larger expenses, uh, are the maintenance contracts that we have out at the airport, janitorial service. Repair runway and field, twenty-one thousand, five hundred both years. Utilities electric, hundred and twenty thousand this year, one thirty next year. Since we do rent out property on the airport, uh, grounds, we do have to pay property taxes since we do receive rent, uh, so that's why you see the property taxes there. On the airport improvements. This is where I think, Rochelle, would you like to, um, hop in and talk about airport improvement and your new equipment?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Melinda, um, so the Airport Improvement Fund, uh, for twenty twenty, we had some projects that we weren't able to completely finish in twenty nineteen, so those carried over, and that includes the, uh, voice switch for the air traffic control tower, which was a huge project that upgraded the equipment and the tower from, uh, pat, hand-me-down, uh, old military equipment to, uh, today's new technology that really has, um, benefited our controllers as well as our pilots and our air-filled, um, airport drivers. So it definitely increased safety out here at the airport, and we also have a stormwater project and a spill can spill prevention, uh, countermeasures, uh, program that we're updating as well as, um, some asbestos removal from the airport administrative building, and then, um, that included ceiling tile and floor tile. And then, um, that included ceiling tile and floor tile and, uh, the repairs to re, um, rehabilitate those areas and bring in new, uh, tile on the ceiling and the floor. Um, twenty twenty-one projects include, uh, some repair to the road out, the entrance road at the airport as well as, um, roof repairs for some of the buildings, uh, a major hanger door repair. And then also include some cash carryover, taking that into twenty twenty-two. Um, new equipment for twenty twenty, uh, some, a spreader for our Oshkosh, which provides the, uh, chemical on the runways. Um, when it, uh, precipitates in the form of ice or snow. Um, we also have our annual skid steer lease. We have a flatbed truck with a generator. Uh, plow replacement for one of our snow removal equipment and then a trailer versus our lift. For twenty twenty-one, we have that skid steer lease again in your detail, another, some other plower placements, uh, two of our mower replacements that mow the land site as well as the airfield lights, um, an auger replacement, and then a couple other vehicle replacements. Um, as part as the, the vehicle replacement program. So if you guys have any questions over those pieces of equipment or projects, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
You can see, uh, line item six zero zero, one point oh nine. There's where that million dollars is on that cap funding. That will move into that new fund that we're going to create, Fund Number Sixty-Two for, uh, Airport Terminal Project. The cash balance at the end of twenty twenty is at five eighty-four, four fifty. And we're projecting to carry over into twenty twenty-two, three hundred and five thousand. And I do want to note, once again, on the revenues that we were able to go down in, in what we need in property tax. So Rochelle, you did a great job in preparing your budget. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Fund Number Sixty-One is Airport Improvement. Uh, Rochelle, if you just want to talk about your grants that you have going on in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one here?
Sure, yeah. As Melinda indicated before, when we prepared this budget, we were pre-COVID nineteen. Um, so some of this information is a, a little outdated. Um, given that being our AIP forty-three has changed in the scope. So originally it included both runways and through some, uh, process with the FA, we've eliminated the secondary runway for remarking. So as we just discussed earlier in the meeting, the AIP forty-three is a hundred percent federally funded through the AIP process and the CARES Act. Um, and however, we do have potentially an opportunity to use, um, these additional AIP funds to go after a design grant for the terminal that will help reduce the impacts, the city's cost for that. So we're exploring that option with the FA currently right now. Um, as we do that, we're also looking into twenty twenty-one and utilizing some of our entitlement funds for the terminal project and/or for a rehab for that secondary runway. So, um, the terminal project works out with the CARES Act and AIP funding. Um, it's kind of a developing situation, but we're basing that information on accurate information, um, from quotes, previous quotes and estimates that we do have.
So Rochelle, this is Mayor Andrew. So I'm curious about the, the seventeen point nine million. So where, where will that show up in the budget as, I know it's a reimbursement, but where is it? What, what budget line and what, what, um, budget number is it going to show up in? I was never clear.
Yeah, so I can briefly talk about that, but I think Melinda and Matt may be able to dive a little bit deeper in the woods on that. Um, there is going to be a new fund created. It's zero six-two. Um, currently, we're reviewing zero six-zero and zero six-one for the airport. So it'll be a whole new fund that is able to track that project, including the CARES Act. Um, that way we can kind of keep it separate and clean from the normal AIP projects.
No, thank you.
You did just fine.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on airport? If not, we can move right into the general fund and we'd be looking at the expenses in the administrative area and also the police department. Uh, the City Commission is the first one, one-one-one. Uh, this is where we have the five commissioner, uh, salaries in here. The, um, maintenance contracts, five-three-four-seven-point-oh-one, that's for, uh, your Novus Agenda, uh, software. So the total expenses in twenty twenty are one thirty-one, six sixty, and for twenty twenty-one is one thirty-eight, two hundred. Sorry, I said that backwards. The next area is City Manager, one-one-two. There's four employees in this area along with their benefits. This, um, budget takes care of the city administrative building, so you're going to see some insurance. You're going to see maintenance contracts, janitorial, uh, some repairs to the building. Uh, we have made, um, several adjustments to everybody's budget for twenty twenty for travel. Uh, so you'll see that it's reduced in half, uh, from the original budget. Uh, we do have property taxes that we have to pay on a few properties here. Um, down in Capital Outlay on the second page, that land purchase, uh, of twenty thousand, that is the repurchase back of the Kansas Avenue project, um, that we had a couple of years ago. We paid back the purchasers on that, so now we're the owner. So we have six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one eighty in twenty twenty and six seventy-five, nine hundred in twenty twenty-one. One-one-three, Service and Finance. Uh, there's twelve positions, uh, in this budget along with their benefits. Uh, this area also pays a little bit on the audit expense, um, thirty thousand this year, thirty-two thousand next year. Um, water also pays for the audit, so does electric, so, um, that's not the total number. Just wanted you to know that. And then we just have, um, Supplies Office. Uh, on the next page, we do have a little bit of equipment. We're looking at, uh, barrier glass for the clerk's workstations in twenty twenty at seventy-five hundred dollars. And then we have computer replacements in both years. Total expenses for twenty twenty is nine sixty-six, one eighty-five. Twenty twenty-one's nine seventy-eight, six hundred. Legal Services, this is for your city attorney. Um, total expenses in twenty twenty revised at one ninety-nine, six hundred. And in twenty twenty-one, we're at two oh one, six hundred. Municipal Court. We have six positions, uh, in this area along with their benefits. They do have, uh, expenses that they pay to the state on state fee court fines, five-four-one-six. Uh, when they collect, um, fine pay, payments from people, there are several items that they collect along with our fine, uh, that they send to the state. Uh, we also have legal court appointed, um, in here at line item fifty-five, thirty-seven, a hundred thousand both years on that. And some new equipment office on the next page. The twenty twenty revised is six oh four, one fifty, and twenty twenty-one is six twenty-eight, one hundred. I think Elise, Elisa might be on, uh, on here or Jennifer. I don't know if you want to talk about any changes you made to Municipal Court?
So the only big changes that, this is Jennifer, sorry, Mayor and Commissioners, this is Jennifer Cunningham. Um, so the only big changes that have been made, uh, to Municipal Court, normally you all review Municipal Court and Prosecution together. But, um, as you know, we went to a different style of prosecutor this year, so that's a little bit different. And we don't have those full-time employees in that section. Um, the other thing that's different is the judge's added salary, so the municipal court budget went up. But as you're aware, um, that's a position that we're sharing with the county. Um, and so although that's all depicted here, they will pay a portion of that, um, judge's salary. Um, and so that will, that will help offset a little bit here. Um, the only other things that, um, I can think of is that we have, um, allotted for legal court appointed fees in that hundred thousand range. And that's, that's about right and about where we are, but obviously with the COVID nineteen stuff, um, we haven't been able to have court. Um, and so that number may actually look different as we get going because obviously, you know, if we don't have, um, hearings, then people aren't appointed attorneys and we're not paying those attorneys until those cases are finished. So although we may end up paying those fees, they may be pushed off until twenty twenty-one or maybe even twenty twenty-two, depending on how it all, how it all shakes out. So there may be some savings there at, at the end of the day when this all, um, shakes loose at the end of, um, twenty twenty. But other than that, I don't think so. I think Melinda did a great job explaining this particular budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you notice anything else.
Okay, moving on, uh, one sixteen is Human Resources. We've got three employees in this area along with their benefits. Uh, they do have an active, uh, advisory board. Um, as you know, the Cultural Relations Board, and we fund them, uh, four thousand a year uh, to do their projects that they like to do in the community. Um, maintenance contracts, uh, that's basically on software and equipment. Going down into new equipment office and new equipment software, I think I'll have Ally, uh, explain those numbers to you.
Um, Mayor Commissioners, this is Ally Medina again. Um, when we were looking at the, uh, software and the, the new equipment, um, new office equipment, we have been able to, this year due to COVID nineteen, have access to the NeoGov learning management software. Um, that has allowed our employees to take part in the electronic training, working on iPads, phones, and we're able to track that training. NeoGov has given us access to that complimentary, so there is not a cost at this time. Um, we've seen great success with that. It's also helped in the training that we need to do, um, to be in compliance with our safety program, which of course affects our workers' compensation, um, funds and, and rates there. So it's allowed us to stay in compliance with that. So the adjustment for twenty twenty that I am requesting is to continue that learning management system once the, um, once the complimentary access expires. Um, then looking at twenty twenty-one, um, we have been, again, working to make sure that we have things digital. Our onboard, uh, system has now been completely ported to digital, um, so that, uh, employees have electronic access at all times. Um, implementing e-forms in twenty twenty-one, um, would then allow us to continue that, um, by having workers' comp packets, P A Rs, which are documents that we use on a regular basis. But rather than sharing those documents back and forth on hard copy, um, we would be able to do that electronically through the system. So it, um, eases, easily filled out by the employees, administrative assistance from their departments and forwarded to the Human Resources Department without tracking that paper. Um, so I think the goal of, of that fund has really just been to get us ported to electronic systems. Um, and then both years do account for the online benefits enrollment system. Uh, currently, that is done completely by paper. All employees come up to City Hall, take part in a, a presentation and fill out hand, hard copies of documents. Those documents are passed around and through multiple departments. And so both years do account for the online benefits enrollment system. We did demo that out with our voluntary benefits, um, when we had those, um, last year in June. Um, and so we are looking at then porting that for both our core and our voluntary benefits this year and open enrollment for that, for that system.
So Ally, this is Mayor Andrew. I have a question. So I, I'm, so you know, with everything going online, I know there are some people who do not have either access or computer or wifi at home or, you know, in, in their residences. So, um, is, so what accommodations are we making? Um, because I know you say you bring everybody in, you fill out hard copy, so I'm curious about the accommodations and, uh, making sure people have access. Because there was assumption when COVID nineteen happened, that everyone has access to a smartphone or a computer or all those things. And so I just want to make sure, again, knowing that culturally, we want to make sure that we're available. And I don't want to miss any really good people who work for the city by them not being able to enter in by, via, everything being online.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Mayor. And yes, we have looked at those options of those that aren't comfortable, either filling out, um, going on the online system. Now for the learning management system, um, the most departments have either computers or iPads that they can provide to employees so that they can take that training virtually. Um, when we're looking at the online enrollments, we still want to make sure that the employees can come in and ask questions if they need to. So typically for, um, and what we did for our voluntary system, um, was to set up a computer lab, making sure that they're, and, and this year we would make sure that they have small groups of, of ten or less. Um, now, a-again, those, those requirements could change as, as we look, go into the fall, um, when we are actually doing open enrollment. But we would make sure that we have computer labs available for those employees to come in and interact with staff. Um, and st- and we would walk them through that system.
No, I appreciate that. The other thing I, I mean, because I know that the school system has been so successful with their iPad initiative. And so, I mean, I don't know if that's something that, you know, we want to consider in the future or just making sure that people have, especially since more and more of it's going on. Is that something that we need to consider? And I'm not saying for this year or this budget year, but I'm saying, is that something we need to do, especially for online training? Or being able to access them on a timely basis? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, Mayor Commissioners?
Thanks, thanks, Ally. So that makes the budget for twenty twenty in Human Resources at three forty-two, six-ten. And then for twenty twenty-one, we're at three seventy-four, eight fifty. Uh, one seventeen is Information Tech. We've got seven full-time employees in that area along with their benefits. And that, this would be taking care of all the software and internet connections, uh, in the city. But when we go back, uh, under Capital Outlay, uh, we've got some upgrades that we're doing in the, in the area. Uh, Clay Billings, I think you might be on.
I am.
If you would like to talk about those capital projects that you have budgeted for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one?
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Clay Billings. And for twenty twenty-one, we are proposing to do a fiber upgrade. So there's currently an older fiber that's run between the city admin building and the LAC. We, it's, was put in in the nineties at some point, and so we're just wanting to upgrade it. Um, the fiber to the fire department was upgraded when they did the, the fire department renovation. And we just want to, you know, keep up on that so we don't have it go down and the LAC loots our connectivity. The other one would be is our, our normal department computers. We do a rotation of our computers in our department. And then the third project is the, uh, security cameras, upgrade the security cameras in the, uh, city admin building.
In twenty twenty, um, we're showing, uh, laptops and the server room UPS. Uh, the wireless link to, uh, from the city to the cemetery at twenty-nine thousand. Uh, we're finishing off the AV project in the commission chambers, uh, payment three of three is in twenty twenty. And then the fiber project at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Can you talk about that, Clay?
Sure, uh, this is Clay Billings again. The, uh, fiber project that is listed there is to connect up the, some of the southern parts of the city departments. So that includes the zoo, the, uh, Parks Department, the police shop and, uh, household hazardous waste down there. The pumping station that the water department has down there as well. And then the big pool, plant lightner. And the, uh, train depot. All with a fiber that would be then directly connected back into the city network at the city admin building. Currently, those locations are either not connected right now or using, in the Parks Department's case, an old fiber, um, again, an older fiber put in in the nineties. Or in the case of like the big pool, we utilize a Cox connection, a Cox internet connection that we have to pay for every month, that then VPNs back in. So this would eliminate those costs and then we would have much better speed and security to all those locations.
That shows the twenty twenty budget, uh, at one million, one forty-two, two-ten. And then the twenty twenty-one at eight forty, six fifty. Is there any other questions on that? One eighteen, we are kept, keeping, uh, the city prosecution as a, uh, department in the administration. Uh, it is a contracted service instead of, um, salaries. Uh, but we did want to keep it separated so that we could track those costs. Um, for twenty twenty, the expenses are two oh three, two fifty, and in twenty twenty-one, we've got two hundred thousand.
Well, Melinda, I was always curious about how does like fees collected from the courts, does that impact any? impact any of these costs, or will we collect it back, the money, or no?
It all goes into the general fund, our municipal court fines. We'll be going through that when we see the revenue next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then the next department that we're going to look at is the police department. It's got several divisions in it. The administrative division takes care of all of the equipment needed for the department in all the divisions. So when we get down to the equipment, that's going to be pretty detailed in this administrative area. We've got two full-time employees and two seasonal in the administrative area, so it has their salaries and benefits shown there. Now, at the back, right at the end of the police department budget, there's a lot of good detailed sheets back there that, when you want to go back and look at this later on, you can take a look at the detail expenses that are in the administrative area. So when we look at line item 5370.01, you're going to have some detail on that that shows for 2020, we have 29,500 in there that we're showing for expenses. And then it gives you that detail. So there's, we've got this remodeling going on that is going to happen over on the Seventh Street property, but once some of that gets done, we need to remodel the L E C. So there's 25,000 in 2021 to remodel the L E C office remodel, and then also do some remodeling on the impound lot and shop. So that makes up the 29,500. When you go on down, we have an L E C contract that we have with the county for the space that we use in the building. It's 215,000 that we'll be paying on that in 2020, and then 220,000 in 2021. Repair vehicle, as you know, there's a large fleet in the police department. We have 65,000 both years on that. Utilities L E C, we pay this to Fannie County. They bill us every month, 160,000 both years. Gas, oil, and diesel in the administrative area is not a lot. It's a lot more in the patrol section. That's where you'll see that big increase. When we go down into new equipment office and down into reimbursement, community trust, Chief Utes, if you would like to discuss this area, or would you like me to?
Either way.
I think you can.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. This is part of the project of the purchase of the building on Seventh Street to continue paying back into the fund, the community trust fund for that purchase and the remodel, as well as the office equipment for that building.
I think there's probably a lot more. 6100.08, we have 434,205 in there for expenses. What that is, is a lease payment on the Sun Guard, lease payment for your software. It's also TASER equipment and M V T replacements at 26,000. 80,000 for police vehicles, there's seven of them, that we're going to be leasing. So there's an $80,000 payment there. We do have included in 2020, 90,000 for body cameras. We have 45,000 for replacement radios, and this is on a replacement schedule. And then the vest grant match at 20,000. That's all your 2020 expenses. In 2021, the Sun Guard is still there as a lease payment. It's payment six of seven. Then we've got the TASER equipment contract, payment three of five at 5,500, M V T replacements at 26,000, radar units at 17,500. They're looking at seven vehicles in 2021 with a lease payment of 80,000 a year. And then we also have the body camera amount in there at 90,000.
I had a question before we move away from that part. So I know that the body cameras, they were, there were some issues with the body cameras, and I can't, I might have seen your report earlier, the staff report. Did those all get resolved? All of that get resolved with the body cameras? Are we still working on that?
Good question, Mayor. Thank you. Chief Utes here. Where we're at with that right now is we're into starting our year three with the body cameras. Part of that contract was for Motorola to identify and deploy a in-car camera system, and they have not met that. They have not fulfilled that part of the contract. So we have not paid anything into, or paid anything into Motorola. They have indicated that we may not have to pay any of that for the last two years, and they are supposed to be providing the updated new contract. As the body cameras we currently have, they have been working great, but they bought out a company called WatchGuard, and they are wanting to deploy out those body cameras and also their in-car cameras. We have tested both. We are very happy with it. We're just waiting to see what contractual agreement they come up with so we can pass along to the city attorney to Matt.
Thank you.
The line item reimbursement, community trust at 390,220. There is some detail in there for you on that. It's a, in 2021, it's a repayment. The way we're going to do this remodel and purchase of that building on Seventh Street is through the community trust as an internal loan. We will be paying it back over four years. Four or five years. We'll have to see what the total cost is. But they're proposing 264,000 as a payment back to the community trust in 2021. They also have expenses listed for high-density storage cabinets at 55,800. They also have a simplex reader at 42,000, drawing cabinets at 12,600. So this will be equipment that goes into the evidence room in the new facility. So that's what makes up the 390,220. Going into 2022, that amount will go down to just a payment to the community trust, but they do need funds to equip the building the way it needs to be. So that shows in the administrative area for the police department, 2,073,600. And in 2021, the amount is 2,727,350. Moving on into investigations, we have 12 full-time employees here along with their benefits. We do have expenses that go along with investigations, 15,000 in 2020, 30,000 in 2021. We have a transfer that comes out of this fund to go to the HIDA grant, and that's our city share for the HIDA funds that we receive. We have to do a matching. Chief Utes, if you would like to talk about your forensic person in this area?
Absolutely. If you all recall, in the McGrath study that they did at the police department, they recommend that we re-implement our digital forensic unit, and they provided a couple of different ideas. So I've met with Sheriff Basque, and since we have a joint gang unit, joint drug task force, joint SWAT, and most of our computer forensics come out of the gang unit and/or the drug task force, we felt that we could share this operation and hire both entities putting in appropriate funds to hire an individual that would be shared by, the funding would be shared by both PD and the sheriff's office. So that's why the amount requested was lower so that we had suspension funds to try to hire a civilian person to fulfill this position.
When would that happen?
We revised the 2020 budget, adding $20,000 in it, and we would like to try to do that later this fall, if approved, and get it started so that we can start looking for training and getting the right person in place. And the 21 budget request of 40,000 to cover 21.
So Chief Utes, this is Mayor Andrew. So again, so that, so that is the salary, but that doesn't include the training, or are they going to be trained previously? Is that what you're looking for?
The sheriff and I are both aware of the financial restraint. So what we're going to look at on the training and equipment is for next year or this year, take that off forfeiture funds and use forfeiture funds to help fund the training and any additional equipment.
No, thank you. I thought that was low for, especially that qualified of a person for that specialty. So thank you.
So that gives us total expenses in the investigation area for 2020 at 1,038,850, and 1,125,700 for 2021. Next area is the patrol, 123. There's 51 employees in this area that are authorized along with their benefits. We do get some reimbursement back from TSA. That's why those numbers are negative there, and also the clicks grants. And then we have uniform expense for the patrol officers. Gas, oil, diesel, we're at 84,200 this year, 85,900 next year. So that brings total expenses in 2020 to 4,432,500, and in 2021, 4,647,100. Is there any question on the patrol area? Okay, moving on to support services, which is 124. There are 28 authorized positions both years in this department along with their salaries, and that's basically what makes up the whole budget. A little bit of repair equipment and uniforms. So the total budget for 2020 is 1,95100, and then in 2021, it's 2,46100. Okay, moving on to animal control. I've got a typo on here, so we're going to save some money for the police department. And repair equipment, 5370.04 in 2020, that should be 4,002, not 40,02. So we have a savings of 36,000 in 2020 that we will get revised for you. But there are two employees in this area along with their benefits. Making that revision on the repair equipment brings this budget to 350,200, and for 2021, 353,450. Bringing all the budgets, all the departments together, the total police budget for 2020 is 9,842,250. And in 2021, we're at 10,899,700. And that concludes what we have for today. Do you have any other questions for the chief while we're on police? I don't hear any. So next meeting, we will finish the general fund with the rest of the departments that are in it, and then we will take a look at the revenues, what we're going to be projecting on those. Hopefully, we might even have our city valuation by then. I'm keeping my fingers crossed. It would be nice to know that number before your meeting next week. Also, next week, you will be, have a, you will have a presentation on the city's audit report for 2019. They will be previewing that with Matt and Jennifer and myself hopefully next week. Then if you would like, you can have a meeting with them on your own to go through the city audit. I think several of you have done that in the past, and I think it's been pretty beneficial. So we will let you know on that. I will have Seeland get with you on that.
So Melinda, can you like, just again, I just want to make sure I'm making, keeping some dates. Can you talk about some benchmark dates that we, I know it's at the very beginning. Can we just go over that one more time at the front? I know that talking about dates.
So on, I'm going to go back to the calendar that's in your notebook. So we're going to be on the June 16th meeting for our next meeting. June 15th is when the county clerk provides the city's assessed valuation. Maybe we'll get it a little bit early. That'd be nice, but that's the due date for it. When we come into July, there's going to be a discussion on the city mill levy. We may even have a little bit of that on June 16th if we do know our valuation. So be thinking about that. If we stay on track with this budget, we would publish on July 10th with a public hearing on July 21st. We do have a month, if you want to delay this for any reason. We do have time to delay it. We have like a 30-day window to delay it. We do have to have everything published by no later than August 15th. And then it has to go to the county clerk on August 25th.
Thank you. I appreciate that review. I just want to make sure we keep in mind, I know that with COVID-19, a lot of things have changed, and really, a lot of meetings and plans are moving targets. But I just, so Commissioners, I just want to make sure we keep in mind some of those dates, and then planning around, I know with the summer coming up, let's just make sure we plan around and make, we stay in contact with Matt and Seeland and Melinda so that we make sure we can meet these deadlines, or at least if we need to move them, that we're aware of those. Because I know those are important to get those things done.
And if we have to have a special meeting, we've done that in the past, just to have, just to be on track with budgets. So we're pretty open to anything that you guys would like to accomplish.
Thank you. I'm not saying, I don't think we'll need one, but I'll tell you, this is the era. I'm not even gonna, yeah, so I don't want to say anything about what the. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, those are all the business items. We're now ready for the consent agenda. You'll remember, we took off H2 and dealt with it already. So the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items, H1 and H3.
This is Commissioner Euler. I move to approve the consent agenda items, H1 and H3.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Dick, I'll second.
So Commissioner Dick seconds. Okay, this is, let's go through the roll call. Commissioner Euler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sessner?
Aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye, 4-0, it passes. So I got it right that time. The city clerk let me know I was, kept saying. Obviously, I'm struggling with counting, so. Okay, so with that, that brings us down to the commission report. I told her to correct me in public. I, hopefully, I can take it, but we'll see. So with that, so anything else matter in that before we go to commission reports?
No, we've taken care of all our business items, Mary. Ready for item or section 13?
So just take a couple of deep breaths and then this is one of my favorite parts of the meeting. Everything is great. This is one of my favorite parts when we get to hear from the commissioners. So today, Commissioner Euler, it's your turn to start.
All right. Well, we got through it, right? I am looking forward to meeting in person again, although we have done well with the Zoom meetings and. But I, I have to tell you, I am excited to get back in person and having some in-person meetings. Having said that, you know, I just want to congratulate Sam again on his retirement, a long stellar career here in Garden City. I know that we're certainly going to miss him. And we just appreciate everything that he has done for the city. So congratulations on a job well done and enjoy your retirement. I hope it is for 35 more years with you and your wife. So good for you. The second thing is the pool. It's exciting to have a name and a theme and I look forward to kind of a renewed energy. It gives us something to look forward to. You know, with everything going on with COVID-19 and all the other things that are happening in our country. I mean, this is such a great opportunity for us here in Garden City to be able to have this to look forward to and have the community input on. And so I'm just so grateful that we have this name and, and we'll start using it. And, and I look forward to seeing this process evolve as well. Again, awesome job to Rachelle at the airport and securing all of the funds. She does a great job on a regular basis. And so it's really exciting to see, you know, this above and beyond. So congratulations. And I can't wait to see all of the things, you know, the improvements at the airport, but also at the zoo as well. And then kind of the last thing is, you know, as the city reopens, as our community reopens on June 8th, I just want to remind people, you know, to be respectful for all the decisions that people make, whether it's to wear a mask in public or not wear a mask in public. You know, we're all making decisions based on our own information. And so I just appreciate it if I choose to wear a mask in the community or if I don't. That, that we'd be disrespectful of one another. And so that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I thank you, Commissioner Euler? Commissioner Dick?
Right. Well, you get to listen to a couple of things twice now and maybe four times by the, by the time we're all the way done with this. But first, like Commissioner Euler said, I'm, I'm really looking forward to doing these meetings in person. It's very difficult to do this over Zoom. But with that, thanks goes out to the staff and Mayor Andrew for, for making this happen and, and really, given everything that we have, it, it worked out pretty well. But again, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in person and not having to do this, although I do have unlimited tea while I'm here because I can just get more tea. So that's a perk. And maybe something Ceylan can add to the, to the commissioners. Okay. Thanks again to Sam and all he's done. We can't say enough how much he's impacted the city and how he's put us on a good track. He's been an amazing part of this community and people don't know how much he has helped us and, and hopefully he, he feels appreciated and enjoys his retirement. Also, congratulations to Sharice on her work in Dodge City. Matt had exactly what I was going to say. Or the rivalry that we have in our sports teams and our schools and, and all that. The municipalities definitely work together and she's been a big part of Dodge City and Southwest Kansas. So congratulations to her. And I didn't know she had her whole career with the city of Dodge City in different roles, but that's really good to see. Thanks to all the team for the, the big pool, especially again, just think about how much effort Jennifer put in from the start. Talking to every one of those kids in our, in our community to put us along this path. It's, it's going to be a good thing and, and, and there's just been so much work in there and thanks for the Confluence team and, and as we go forward on that. Exciting to, to hear about the terminal project and to see how that all comes out. It's one of those pie in the sky kind of things that really didn't look like we did, we didn't have a clear way to get it done and, and now it looks like we, we're on that path. So that's really good. And that'll be another big benefit, not just for Garden City, but for Southwest Kansas as we grow our, our service. And have the ability to continue being, being a player regionally for, for air traffic, which is important for everybody. I mean, it's important for our region to be able to get people in and out through, through air. So that's great to see. And then finally, I'd like to just mention that on tomorrow night at 7:30 at Stevens Park will be a unity walk and gathering. And the big thing I'd like to mention on this is this has been organized by Chavez Baker Hill. And he actually felt like he needed to do something. And, and so he actually reached out to the police department and police chief to, to organize a unity walk instead of some sort of protest or some sort of demonstration. They actually came together and, and, and is, in doing this unity walk tomorrow at 7:30 at Stevens Park. So it's a great thing that, that we have working together in Garden City and in Southwest Kansas. And again, it's, it's another testament to how we maybe see things a little bit differently than the rest of the country and, and we can work together to get the points across and, and we don't have to fight each other to learn more about each other. So if you feel compelled, that is again tomorrow night at 7:30 at Stevens Park. So that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Exciting times in Garden City as we move forward on the new aquatics facility and the name and construction company. Great to see how we're, that's going to be taking shape. I echo what the other commissioners have already said, so I don't want to reiterate all of that. Just wanted to mention one thing that if people are going through their emails and have not done the census, I would like to remind everybody to fill out their census form. They've probably gotten a hard copy in the mail, but the census is really important and vital for our community, especially during these times when we have a pandemic. It helps with our, not only state, but also national, how they respond to us here locally. So please fill out the census if you have not already done so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessna. So yeah, I, I echo a lot of things. I, I had, I didn't realize how much I missed you all, but I'm looking forward to be, to being, and social distancing being near you. So I'm excited about that. I do appreciate Commissioner Euler's talking about this idea of being kind. Again, people are making individual decisions or family decisions with how they're handling getting back together or the reopening of Garden City and Fannie County. So again, I, I just want to reiterate that this is, it's a time to be kind and to be considerate and so making sure we, we do that. Sam is, you know, we said tons about him before. You, you can't say enough. I was really excited to see Alan Shelton and Steve Carell there back at the, at his retirement, which tells me that, you know, I mean, that, that there's this camaraderie and family. I wish we could have kept Sam from Kentucky, but there must be, so we understand him going there and, and so a lot of us who are bicycle riders and new bicycle riders will be. He opened his door and said, come and show up and you know, so I'm excited about that invitation. So that's probably something he shouldn't have said publicly, but too late. I do also want to say what a great job that Rochelle has done with the airport. I, I did notice and I wanted to make sure and I forgot to do this in, in the meeting. The letters of support mean a lot to any type of a grant application. And so I just want to say thank you to Senator Jerry Moran for the letter of support. It was glowing and it really sets Garden City. It really helps us be over the top. And then also Representative Roger Marshall. Those letters of support mean a lot. It takes a lot to do those letters and to get them in on time, you know, bringing everything together for a grant. So I just want to say thank you for that and I really appreciate that. I also want to reiterate the importance of GrowWell Clinic to our employees and the great job they do. I know that they're opening back up to do HRAs. And I'll tell you, keeping our employee base really healthy and, and really moving us forward, thinking about putting wellness above has really, not only has it saved us tons of money, but it's given us an incredible workforce. So just want to make sure that we as, as, I mean, that Garden City, the staff of Garden City, take, take advantage of GrowWell and make sure that you're doing those things. The last thing I want to talk about, I, I, Commissioner Dick talked a little bit about the rally. I'll tell you, this is a very hard time in our country. And so, you know, I want to pray for many of the cities who are experiencing less than unity. And so if you decide to go to the rally, making sure that, you know, we as, as people, we have done such a great job with diversity. I'm not saying we've done a perfect job. We're still learning. But I really appreciate who we are in Garden City and, and, you know, I just want to again lift up those people who are experiencing a lot of trouble. I know there are businesses who have been destroyed and I know there are people have been, you know, are afraid, but I'll tell you, Garden City, we have been, we have been blessed. That's really the way to put it. And I appreciate all the work that we as a community do to really not only care about one another, but really work together to make Western Kansas and Garden City great. So I appreciate that. We'll be praying for a lot of those cities and you know, there are, there are some tragedies and, and so and it's, it's been a very hard time. And so I want to just make sure that we are lifting up people and really looking for the best in them. So with that, I think that we are, are done for today. Have a wonderful rest of your, your day. We are finishing a little bit early. So I just want to let you know, we gave you back, back about 20 minutes of your time. So had planned on until five o'clock, but we're excited about that. Have a wonderful rest of your day. We will see you soon, hopefully in person. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.